Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is 3:02 in the afternoon on Wednesday, April 24th. I want to welcome everyone to Tallahassee City Commission Meeting. We are going to have a wonderful meeting today. Full meeting beginning at 3:00. We have a public hearing that begins at 6:00, and we will take care of the business before the city of Tallahassee. It is my honor and privilege to introduce my friend and my leadership Tallahassee classmate, the great Dr. Rosalyn Tompkins, the president and founder of Mothers in Crisis. I'll be providing our invocation. Reverend, thank you for joining us. If you please rise.
Thank you. It's a privilege and an honor to stand before you in this prayer. Gracious Father, we pray for your blessings for this meeting of the city commissioners. We pray for you to bless the staff, the commissioners, the people assembled, and the residents of the city of Tallahassee. Father, you know the needs and can meet them by your power and grace. We pray for the spirit of wisdom, counsel, and might to rest upon all the decisions and policies that will affect the people. We pray for the unity of the spirit in the bond of peace, and that your hope would not disappoint, but always prevail. In your name we pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, Dr. Tompkins, thank you so much for joining us. We appreciate you providing the invocation today. All right, Mr. Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Items 14.02 and 14.03 scheduled as public hearings have been rescheduled for your May 8th meeting.
14.02, 14.03 have been rescheduled. That leaves one item on the public hearing tonight at 14.01. Any questions, colleagues, or the manager? Okay, with that, we will go straight into presentations. I'm going to change up the order just a second. And first and foremost, I would like to ask Keith Bowers, please come join us, if you wouldn't mind, for a very special presentation. Is Sam here as well? No.
Billy Medina.
Oh, Billy Medina. Where's Billy? Come on, Billy. Come join us. Come join us. Excellent. Keith Bowers with the Office of Economic Vitality has a very special presentation. Keith.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, I'm deeply honored to announce, and if I could have my team come up, the O E V team, I'm deeply honored to announce that we, the Office of Economic Vitality, has been awarded the Regional Deal of the Year Award on behalf of the Florida Economic Development Council for the Amazon Robotics Fulfillment Deal. This honor reflects our communities' dedication to strategic economic development that drives regional growth, creates jobs, and fuels innovation. Achieving this feat required the combination of talents from various departments within the city of Tallahassee. I'm grateful for the leadership and support by the mayor, the city commission, and the city manager. And now we'll have the Assistant General Manager of Amazon Fulfillment Center, Billy Medina, provide some comments.
All right, Billy.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. As mentioned, Billy Medina, I'm the Assistant General Manager at our TLH2 facility, Amazon. Congratulations to Keith and to the economic development team here. Great job. We are very excited to be here. Amazon is very happy to be part of the community here in Tallahassee now and looking forward to many successful years going forward. We are very excited to have over 2,000 associates now at our facility, at our site, and continuing to build careers for our associates going forward here in the Tallahassee area. Thank you very much, everybody. Congratulations again.
Billy, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
You came from like Oregon. Curtis Richardson. Let me turn it over to you, my friend.
Thank you, Mayor. It is my honor and pleasure to present our next proclamation. On behalf of Earth Month, we all cherish this earth that we live on, and we all have to take a role in preserving and protecting our natural environment so that it is here for generations to come. And so this proclamation is in celebration of Earth Day. The proclamation reads, whereas April 22nd, 2024 marks the 54th annual celebration of Earth Day, which was established to inspire environmental awareness and encourage the conservation, protection, and appreciation of our nation's natural resources. And whereas the city of Tallahassee has a longstanding record of environmental stewardship and is recognized for its leadership in sustainability initiatives, including being named one of the top 15 green fleets in North America in 2022. Whereas the city has developed and implemented numerous programs that promote recycling, green building, water quality improvements, and litter control to help our community be sustainable. And whereas several programs focus on local food production to increase access to healthy food and spur economic development, including City Farm TLH and the South Side Farmer's Market. And whereas Tallahassee has one of the highest percentages of tree coverage in the nation at 55%, has for 32 consecutive years been recognized as a Tree City USA, and has a commitment to sustainability and resiliency. Whereas the city is implementing the Adopted Clean Energy Plan, which is a roadmap to move the organization and community to 100% net clean renewable energy. And whereas the city is progressing towards those goals by operating a 62 megawatt solar farm on Tallahassee International Airport property, the largest airport-based solar farm in the world, powering the city's municipal buildings with renewable energy, operating all electric buses comprising one-third of the city's Star Metro Public Transit System fleet, and incorporating additional alternative fuel vehicles within the city's fleet. And whereas the city's electric utility has reduced emissions beyond the set goals for the 2020 Paris Accord and the Kyoto Protocol, now therefore I, John E. Daly, by the authority invested in me as mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby proclaim April Tallahassee Earth Month. In witness whereof, the mayor has signed his name, John E. Daly, on this date, April 14th, 2024. 24th, that looks like a one. I'm sorry. Yeah, that two looks like a one on this. Anyway.
You want to invite our friends from?
Yes, of course. Who's? Oh, yeah. All right.
Adam, great job.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Got some remarks?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Adam Jacobs with the city's Sustainability and Resilience Division. And on behalf of our Director of Housing and Community Resilience, Dr. Kemble Thomas, our Sustainability Coordinator, Kelly Corvin, and the rest of our Sustainability and Resilience team, we'd like to thank the mayor, the commission, our city manager, all the city departments and their leadership, as well as you all, the community, who continue to support our city's sustainability efforts. As you know, sustainability in the city of Tallahassee is not something we do one day out of the year or even one month out of the year. But here at the city, Earth Day and implemented sustainability initiatives, that's the way we do business every day. So with that, we'd like to take a few moments to highlight on this Earth Month some of the many amazing things that the city departments have carried out over the past year. Provided outreach to residents on city sustainability programs and personal sustainability practices. Hosted an electric vehicle guest drive event for area commercial and institutional fleet managers. Expanded recreational opportunities within the city's park system with addition of new facilities, including Four Oaks Park. Hosted 12 South Side Farmer's Market Days and received a grant to further enhance market and outreach for that program. Designated over 720 acres as the new airport gateway corridor ground fields area along Lake Bradford and Springfield, Spring Hill Roads to help spur redevelopment. Implemented projects to increase sustainability in many of the city's facilities, such as energy efficiency upgrades and EV charging infrastructure. Planted over 300 trees through the city's Adopt a Tree program and over 600 additional trees throughout city parks, rights of way, and beautification areas. Received $11.7 million in grant funding to extend water and sewer service to the South Side Triangle. Provided more than 3,500 residential energy audits and more than 2,400 Energy Star rebates. Avoided over 55,000 tons of greenhouse gas emissions through the SolarNet Metering Program. And to date, transitioned 21% of the city's light-duty vehicle fleet to electric or hybrid. We also diverted 10,600 tons of material from the landfill through recycling and provided over 2.5 million rides through Star Metro. And finally, secured $35 million in federal funding to transition Star Metro buses to electric and construct the South Side Transit Center with sustainable design elements. So these are just some of the many sustainability efforts. For a deeper look at these items, as well as other initiatives, I encourage you to grab a copy of the 2024 Sustainability Spotlight. We put copies in the back table of this chamber. And thank you once again for continuing to support Earth Month.
Our final proclamation of the evening is a very special proclamation. And at this time, I would like to ask the Brickler family to please come join me and take your time. Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, not too long ago, we lost a true hero of this community, a true pillar of this community, one of the most wonderful Tallahasians that truly represents who we are. And by community request, although he has been recognized many times, the city, the county, the state, all over the medical community, all over the world, it is appropriate and fitting that once again, we recognize by proclamation from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee a proclamation, whereas in 1957, Dr. Alexander D. Brickler came to Tallahassee, Florida, to join his father-in-law, Dr. R.L. Anderson, at Florida A&amp;M Hospital. And whereas with the closing of Florida A&amp;M Hospital in 1971, Dr. Brickler, along with Dr. Anderson, became the first African-American physicians to practice at Tallahassee Memorial Hospital. And whereas in 1982, Dr. Brickler received national attention and was awarded Family Doctor of the Year by the American Academy of Family Practitioners in Good Housekeeping Magazine. And whereas by the age of 90, Dr. Brickler delivered more than 30,000 babies. Let me pause right there. We have a little fun statistic. There are 411 municipalities in the state of Florida. The largest majority of municipalities have an average population of about 17,000 people. So if you think about the fact that Dr. Brickler delivered basically two cities with the babies, 30,000 individuals is amazing. And whereas the Tallahassee Memorial Healthcare Women's Pavilion is named in his honor. And whereas Dr. Brickler's legacy not only thrives through his children, but through the countless number of doctors, nurses, and staff who had the opportunity to work with him. And whereas, as we celebrate Tallahassee's bicentennial, we take time to recognize and celebrate those who have made a significant impact in our community, like Dr. Alexander D. Brickler. Now therefore I, John E. Daly, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize Dr. Alexander D. Brickler, written to the record and witness of each and every one of you, signed with my signature dated with today's date, April 24th, 2024. Will you please stand and join me in recognizing Dr. Brickler?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm honored to be here with my family, myself, my brother David, my wife Mildred, my son Alex, my daughter-in-law Jennifer, and Alexander Dumont Jesse Brickler the 5th. My father was a man of few words, and aside from push, push. He would have used those few words to say thank you for the recognition, and he probably would have said, it's great to see government in action. Thank you so much.
Thank you. What a wonderful way to start the meeting. Mr. Manager, do we have any announcements to come before the city commission this evening?
No, sir.
Excellent. Do we have any appearances by other appointed boards, committees, or other governments?
No, sir.
Excellent. We're on the consent agenda. Has any consent agenda item been pulled?
No, sir.
All right. Do we have any public comment on consent?
Mayor, we do have one speaker on item 8.07.
8.07, so let's go ahead and pull 8.07. So is there a motion for the rest of the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We are now on item 8.07. Mr. Manager, for the introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item seeks your approval of subdivision plat for Canopy Unit 5, Phase 5. If you need additional information, Steve Schaefer, our Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure General Manager, is here.
Excellent. And may we go to public comment, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Our speaker on this item is Stephen Martin. He is connected with us through our virtual connection.
Mr. Martin, are you with us? Mr. Martin, thank you for joining us. You name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Stephen Martin, 2625 Stonegate Drive. I also noted that I was going to speak on Earth Month proclamation, but maybe they don't have people speak during those. And I was going to say during that, I probably wouldn't be here today if it weren't for a word uttered at your last meeting. That word was disingenuous, and a word that has come to my mind often over my experience with this city, usually in an environmental manner, an environmentally disingenuous. I was going to say, I certainly hoped proclamation wasn't read in such a way. Now, this is about Canopy Development that I've had quite an experience with. Development, and the mayor, I'm sure can recall, I saw you as county commissioner several times about this, sir. And so, you know, you didn't disagree with me that this wasn't a normal way that government operates, and what was done to get annexation and many other special measures taken. Canopy was advertised and promoted as a nature-based community. Well, based on what's happened to it since then, I would say that that was an example of being environmentally disingenuous, that developer. Lobbyists for it said wanted to protect God's gift, as I brought up before, who became a planning commissioner. Staff members more or less agreed that it was going to be a nature-based community. It had several violations, and as I said, hasn't proven to be such a community. So I do think there is some grounds for my concern about the sincerity and thoughts about being disingenuous when it came to that development. If this city is serious about its commitment to the environment and not environmentally disingenuous, excuse me, disingenuous, I cannot understand continuing to support this development and this developer. So I don't know. I was just going to say, I pray that that proclamation was said in a sincere way and not in a disingenuous way. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
That's the only speaker on the item.
All right, colleagues.
Move staff recommendation option number one.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Do we have any other items on the consent agenda?
No, sir.
No. City Commission Business, the 10.01 Sinking Fund Commission appointment. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, this item requests your appointment of William McLeod to the Sinking Fund Commission. He is currently serving a term that expires at the end of May. He's eligible and interested in being reappointed.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Mr. Clerk.
No, sir.
Colleagues.
Move staff recommendation on option number one.
Second.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We're on item number 10.02. Mr. Clerk.
This item asks for appointment of George Johnson Jr. and Tracy Cohen to the Minority Women and Small Business Enterprise Citizen Advisory Committee. Each of them currently serves a term that expires at the end of April, so in about a week, and each is eligible and interested in being reappointed, so they're recommended for reappointment.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
All right, colleagues.
Move staff recommendation on option number one.
Option number one's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. On item number 10.03, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor and Commissioners, this item is for appointment of individuals to the Tallahassee Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Slightly different terms in each, but each would be appointed now and eligible to a term that expires either March 31st of '26 or March 31st of '27, depending on the seat. And the two individuals recommended for appointment are Kristique Henry and Shawna Powell.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues.
Move staff recommendation option number one.
I second it.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim. There's a second by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Do we have any more appointments coming before the city commission? Mr. Clerk.
No, sir.
We're on the introduction of ordinance, 11.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could just preface the introduction of these next ordinances by noting that at the April 7th city commission meeting, we were directed by the city commission to bring back proposed charter amendments. The way these are organized is there were four different proposed charter amendments. Each one will be read separately, and they lay out the actual amendment to the charter that would be proposed. Attached to each agenda item is a draft resolution. That resolution includes four questions, one corresponding to each of the ordinances, and that would be the language that would be on the ballot in November for each of these. Of course, the ordinances are not effective or less than until the voters would approve them. So I'll start with item number 11.01 is the introduction of ordinance number 24-0-20, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, providing for a referendum election to be held on November 5, 2024, for the purpose of determining whether the city charter should be amended regarding commissioner compensation, deleting Section 1-1 of related laws and creating Section 23 in the Charter of the city of Tallahassee, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 24-0-20, adopting a proposed charter amendment concerning commissioner compensation, and schedule the first and only public hearing and action on May 8, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we do. The first speaker we have is Bernard Stevens.
How many speakers do we have?
We have two in person and one virtual.
Okay.
Total of three. Bernard Stevens is our first speaker, followed by Stanley Sims.
Great. Name and address for the record, please, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Reverend Bernard Michael Stevens Jr., and my address is? You know, when I look at this paperwork, it just makes me think about why we do what we do. Do we do it for the right reason, or do we do it for political gain? Nine times out of 10, I think we do it for political gain to see who we can have in our pockets. I don't agree with all that you do. I probably never will. What really disturbs me the most is how we sitting around here playing with people's lives and taking it for granted. That's what hurts me the most. We got politicians running for office who sitting around there and pretty much doing the wrong thing. I have a lot that I have to discuss today throughout this meeting, but I just want to make it known, you all are requesting more money to be paid equal to the county commissioners. What are you going to do different? What are you going to do different besides continue to tell the people no when they come in here? What are you going to do different besides allow Reese Gold to use the Florida statutes for whatever he want to do it to stagnate the growth? What are you going to do? You want money for what? This job requires compassion, empathy, and you don't have that. You don't have it at all. Because if you knew democracy and knew how democracy works, what you would do is you would listen to the people who put you in the seats. And it's mighty funny, every time elections come around, you want to start throwing money at people to get them involved. Cheryl Callier-Brown seems to be right here on this man's side, along with trying to get Mr. What his name is, Rudy Ferguson, over in Jack Porter's seat. So I'm just going to go ahead and tell y'all right now, y'all better fight. and then, and they lay out the actual amendment to the charter that would be proposed. Attached to each agenda item is a draft resolution. That resolution includes four questions, one corresponding to each of the ordinances, and that would be the language that would be on the ballot in November for each of these. Of course, the ordinances are not effective until, or lessen until the voters would approve them. So, I'll start with item number eleven point oh one is the introduction of ordinance number twenty four dash oh dash twenty, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, providing for a referendum election to be held on November five, twenty twenty four, for the purpose of determining whether the city charter should be amended regarding commissioner compensation, deleting section one dash one of related laws and creating section twenty three in the Charter of the City of Tallahassee, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number twenty four dash oh dash twenty, adopting a proposed charter amendment concerning commissioner compensation, and schedule the first and only public hearing and action on May eight, twenty twenty four, at six P. M. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we do. The first speaker we have is Bernard Stevens.
How many speakers do we have?
We have two in person and one virtual.
Okay.
Total of three. Bernard Stevens is our first speaker, followed by Stanley Sims.
Great. Name and address for the record, please, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Reverend Bernard Michael Stevens, Jr. And my address is like this. Um, you know, when I look at this paperwork, um, it just makes me think about why we do what we do. Do we do it for the right reason, or do we do it for political gain? Nine times out of ten, I think we do it for political gain to see who we can have in our pockets. I don't agree with all that you do. I probably never will. What really disturbs me the most is how we sitting around here playing with people's lives and taking it for granted. That's what hurts me the most. We got politicians running for office who sitting around there and pretty much doing the wrong thing. I have a lot that I have to discuss today throughout this meeting, but I just want to make it known, you all are requesting more money to be paid equal to the county commissioners. What are you going to do different? What are you going to do different besides continue to tell the people no when they come in here? What are you going to do different besides allow Reese Gold to use the Florida statutes for whatever he want to do it to stagnate the growth? What are you going to do? You want money for what? This job requires compassion, empathy. You don't have that. You don't have it at all. Because if you knew democracy and knew how democracy works, what you would do is you would listen to the people who put you in the seats. And it's mighty funny, every time elections come around, you want to start throwing money at people to get them involved. Cheryl Callier Brown seems to be right here on this man's side, along with trying to get Mr. What his name is Rudy Ferguson over in Jack Porter's seat. So, I'm just go ahead and tell y'all right now, y'all better fight. And Sister Porter, if you got anything in you, you better fight like hell. Because if they get their way, he get there and he stay there, this city is doomed. It is doomed, doomed, doomed. I'm going to be that superhero who going to save the day. Because one thing I don't like is I don't like mess. I don't like our children continue to shoot each other. I don't like our politicians hiding behind doors. I don't like that. And it's, quite frankly, it's time to clean up the house. He got to go, you got to go, he got to go, she got to go. These two are doing a wonderful job. And then y'all get mad at them and throw political clout out there in the atmosphere to get the people confused. You know what, Mr. Daly? For your leadership, you should be doing better. You've been in politics a mighty long time. Here I am, the new kid on the block, here to do something a whole lot different. And that's listening to the people of Tallahassee, what you failed to do. Because if you did, we would not be sitting around here looking for more money to give individuals who have not done nothing these last three years. So, let's just make this make sense this meeting, and I'm going to be on my best behavior and use a sense of decorum, since it seems as if you seem to think I don't have it. But I just come to tell you, I have facts and I have my reasoning. But I'm not going to let y'all destroy this city. It's on fire, and the reason how I know it's on fire because you mistreat these firefighters, and they still got to respond to fire. So, I'm going to put this fire out in here. Because if I get in here, this man here, my recommendation coming strong. He got to go.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Stanley Sims is our next speaker, and then we'll go to our virtual speaker.
Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Stanley Sims, thirteen twenty Avondale Way. The Bible says, muzzle not the ox that shreddeth out the corn. Well, let's look at the corn. One hundred thirty-five million dollar police station where we were promised sixty million. Three point eight projected budget deficit. Sustainability recovery grant for my friends that grow Tallahassee for one point eight million dollars. Crime Rapid video of alcohol being illegally placed or not properly trained officers that has fled our country with three point five million views. And you want your salaries doubled. Oh, I'm sorry, I left out one thing. An eight point five percent tax public safety increase that leaves out our firefighters. I don't know what's devastating, you asking for that, or you and, or Commissioner Richardson and Commissioner Williams' response, and Commissioner Diane Williams. I want to commend you because it's been a long time since you have really held your head up and listened to me properly. And I thank you for that today. But I think it's very disingenuous, I'm sorry you find that humorous, but I was being humble, Mr. Mayor. And I find it disingenuous when you make comments back to me when you say, Mr. Richardson, this, this raise, you're not voting for this for you. Well, if you ain't voting it for you, why are you running for reelection? It is going to impact you. It does.
You have thirty seconds remaining.
I love our police. I love pu, my wife working right up there in that city attorney's office. I believe in paying a man what is due. But the, we need some, some proof. We don't pay our top management cheaply. We pay our lower people average.
You're at three minutes.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Stephen Martin.
Mr. Martin, name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
You can hear me, okay? Okay, Stephen Martin, two six two five Stonegate Drive. Yeah, Mr. Sims just brought up disingenuous, and of course, I was going to make mention of that here, too. But at the CRC meetings, there was the chair who's from the beginning said this is public service, and he never supported the idea of doubling your salaries. I believe the mayor can recall county commission salaries were an issue with city commissioners back when you were running for county commission the first time, sir. I remember on a public radio talk show when you and your opponents were all asked about, would you be willing to work for half your salary, which was equivalent of what the city commissioners were? Your opponents all immediately said yes. You said you had other things to think about at the time, and granted, you were the leading candidate and got elected. You wouldn't commit yourself the way your opponents would. No surprise in politics. At the CRC meeting that I attended, I pointed out, one of the appointees had recently received quite a bit from a blueprint board decision meeting, more than a million dollars. And it gave the impression that, well, blueprint board, which consists of members of the city commission, gave him a favor. You think he was going to refuse or deny giving you a favor? Yeah, he went ahead and from the beginning was in support of this. I made mention that he should have been accusing himself for the appearance of a conflict of interest. So, when you appoint people who you financially rewarded to make a decision about whether or not you deserve financial compensation, no surprise, friends serve friends. All right, at the last meeting, I mentioned the word disingenuous, and it was brought up during this part of it, although it had to do with firefighters. As Mr. Sims brought up, one of you, in fact, two of you, said this wasn't for you, that this is for future commissioners. Well, if you weren't being disingenuous, then you ought to be willing to commit yourselves to not accepting the increase if it gets voted in. So, you two who said that it's not for you, if you're not disingenuous, you ought to be willing to live up to your word. And I know which two it was, and I'm pretty sure you both know, I mean, Mr. Sims pointed out one of you, the other one, and we'll see how sincere you are if, in fact, this comes to bear.
You have thirty seconds remaining.
All right, I'll give you thirty seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Mayor, that's the last speaker I have on item eleven oh one. Just taking a quick look to make sure there was no one else.
All right, so the, the option before us is simply to introduce the ordinance, but we'll take a motion anyway. Is there a motion on table for staff recommendation?
Move staff recommendation option number one.
Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Mayor, Commissioner Diane Williams Cox. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Passes three two with Commissioner Matt Low and Commissioner Porter in dissent. We are on item number eleven point oh two. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number eleven point oh two is the introduction of ordinance number twenty four dash oh dash twenty one, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, providing for a referendum election to be held on November fifth, twenty twenty four, for the purpose of determining whether the city charter should be amended regarding the jurisdiction of the Independent Ethics Board, amending section sixty one of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number twenty four dash oh dash twenty one, adopting a proposed charter amendment regarding the jurisdiction of the Tallahassee Independent Ethics Board, and schedule the first and only public hearing and action on May eight, twenty twenty four, at six P. M. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We have one speaker on this item, Stanley Sims.
Great. Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Thank God I'm still at the same address from the last seven minutes. I'm here because the importance of this position. And I think that we've been so busy talking about the clarity of this position, but we really have not talked about the overlook of the need of this position because it's dysfunctional. This position is dysfunctional for you as elected leaders. It's dysfunctional for our city employees. Is this functional for our ethics office? Okay, let me just stop. Let me say how it's dysfunctional. Because even them are not clear on their role. The inspector clearly said in the meeting of the review charter committee that there is some times there that there is some unclarity. That's the point here. That's what we need to address. It's not about, will he do this or can I get him to do that? I had the opportunity to watch the city commission over in Quincy last night, and I was not prepared for what I saw. What I saw was commissioners who had some personal issues laid them to the side and made some decisions that they said they didn't like, but they treated their fellow colleagues with respect and decorum, and they even treated their taxpaying citizens who they did not agree with. I was so moved, I had to call over there and tell them, thank you. And guess what? It wasn't small issues. They dealt with their fireman fighter situation. They dealt with a controversial issue with some property transfer. What I'm saying is, we have that lack here. I can't properly get complaints filed and processed in a timely manner. But they can provide documentation for Rudy Ferguson to provide to the courts. Where is the, if I'm filing frivolous complaints, then maybe someone is not properly educating That was Ms. Diane Williams Cox, again, cannot repress her disrespect and her dislike for me exercising my right as a taxpaying citizen.
Thirty seconds remaining.
It's hard for her to allow me to do that. And that's something I don't have to ask your permission to do. I was born with that when they gave me a social security number. You can have the rest of my sex.
Our next speaker, please.
Mayor, that's the only speaker on item eleven point oh two.
All right, the item before us, the recommended action is simply to introduce the ordinance into the record. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Porter. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Matt Low. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. We are on item number eleven point oh three. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number eleven point oh three is the introduction of ordinance number twenty four dash oh dash twenty two, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, providing for a referendum election to be held on November five, twenty twenty four, for the purpose of determining whether the city charter should be amended regarding two candidate elections, amending section one twenty of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number twenty four dash oh dash twenty two, adopting a proposed charter amendment regarding two candidate elections, and schedule the first and only public hearing and action on May eight, twenty twenty four, at six P. M. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
One speaker, Stanley Sims.
Ah, Mr. Sims, name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Stanley Sims. Democracy is a very personal thing to me. The ability to have, to express your vote. There was a time in my life, Commissioner, I didn't value that ability, and I committed a felony. And my rights were taken from me. And now, through restoration of voters' rights, I understand their logic for doing this. It might be a cost savings, but I just think that, me personally, everyone, the opportunity that we can provide for someone to walk to that ballot box and cash your vote, I just think we should do this. This is, this, to me, when I look at rights that my grandmother had, that she don't have today, just really sensitive about shutting down less voting opportunities. I get the magic. I see the numbers and all of that, but I also see what's going on our streets. And we are often talking about engaging communities. And, and, and Mayor, let me say, this, this is not a Tallahassee problem of getting people to engage, getting people to vote. That, that, that's a national problem. And I just think if we are acknowledging this is a, a national problem, then my poor grandmother, she wasn't as smart as you all, she said that when you take something away from somebody, you got to give them something else in return. And so, I'm, I'm asking, what is that something else that you've put in place to engage our voters, to, to make them want to vote and make them want to come out and engage in these democratic processes?
You have thirty seconds left.
Because I know it ain't easy to love me always. But the Bible says that there's a certain respect due all the time, Commissioner Diane Williams Cox.
Our next speaker, please.
No other speakers on eleven oh three.
Great. Recommended action, simply read into the record, introduction of first ordinances. There is a motion on the table.
Move staff recommendation option number one.
Second.
Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. Item number eleven point oh four, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number eleven point oh four is the introduction of ordinance number twenty four dash oh dash twenty three, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, providing for a referendum election to be held on November five, twenty twenty four, for the purpose of determining whether the city charter should be amended regarding periodic charter review, amending section one thirty four of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended op, action is option one, introduce ordinance number twenty four dash oh dash twenty three, adopting a proposed charter amendment regarding periodic charter review, and schedule the first and only public hearing and action on May eight, twenty twenty four, at six P. M. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Great. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Clerk?
One speaker, Stanley Sims.
Mr. Sims, you have three minutes. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Mayor, this should not take three minutes unless I get disrespected or emotionally As you know, I attended all of those charter review meetings. Very informative. One of the concerns that I kept hearing is that when we set these meetings, and this may be my, lack of my high education or lack of a high education or terminology, but one of the concerns that kept coming up, the board felt strongly directed that they could only touch certain areas or cover certain topics. And they wanted a sense of freedom and a freedom of more time to discuss other issues. As you do know, there were other issues that wanted to be discussed, but time did not allow it, adequate time would not allow it. The other thing was the, the, the amount of time that is given to the committee in order to look at our charter review. And, and I, I just think that I learned a lot attending those meetings of what is possibly I learned a lot attending those meetings of what is possibly is done. Issues of recall of elected officials that you don't like. Those things are talked about in your charter review. Consolidation of your law enforcement issues. Those things are brought up at your charter review. Consolidation, you know, Mayor, you brought up the, with your dispace of the firemen, you brought up that if the county wanted to operate their own fire thing, those kinds of things are really discussed and hashed out among citizens in that charter review, or can be. You know, well, like I said, there needs to be, if I don't know, if I am dumb, if I am irresponsible, that means that I'm paying an additional 8.5% taxes on what I'm already paying, and you guys have failed to educate me. And it's not that of fact that I have not made myself available, maybe because my limited education is because of your very restrictive accessibility. Because I'm often emailing your staff, often talking with them, and I have a relationship with them.
Thirty seconds.
So if you could direct them to get with me and educate me so that I can be a better informed citizen and can engage into this process, if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
That was the last speaker on the item.
Great. So the recommended action before us today is to simply read into the record the introduction of the first ordinance. Is there a motion on the table?
Move staff recommendation option number one.
Then probably moved by the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed. Passes unanimously, five zero. Do we have any other introduction of ordinances today, Madam Attorney?
We do not, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. We're on policy formation and direction. Item 12.01. Madam, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is an update on the Northwood site and as well as the Tallahassee Police Department Headquarters Construction Project. This dates back many, many years to 2016 when the initial discussion regarding a new police department headquarters was had, and it's matured over many years. And during that time, this body will recall that the city had an opportunity to purchase the Northwood site at auction. We did. And then subsequently, that site was identified as a really good location for our police department headquarters. So we've got a lot of history. We'll be briefing this, but I wanted to make sure we gave you a good overview of kind of how that's shaping out and more specifically, what the status of the police department headquarters is. And so Devin Levens, which you know has been involved in community engagement, getting feedback of what the community would like to see at the Northwood site generally. He'll start the presentation, and then John Powell, our construction manager, will talk very specifically about where we are with the Tallahassee Police Department Headquarters. So with that, let me ask Devin to begin the presentation.
Devin, thank you.
How's everyone doing? Did y'all have fun today at that event?
Sure did.
Absolutely.
All right. We're going to talk about another project that we're going to get to have some fun with. Want to go back to look at where we've kind of been with the TPD site, the headquarters, and the community engagement. Like you know, we've done extensive community engagement going back to 2020, but even further than that. But just since 2020, we had the two community meetings at the Senior Center. We got a lot of feedback. We've met with neighborhood associations, and we also have our website that's available 24/7 with all the information, history of the project on there. This is something you've seen before. This came out of the meetings at the Senior Center, where we talk about amenities that are in one mile of the site. Lot of amenities that we currently have there, but this is stuff we heard from the community. We also showed you what we didn't have within one mile of the site. And those are some things that we talked about. How could we incorporate things that aren't already near the site into the future? And moving forward, let's talk about the site a little bit. Looking at the site, this is a visual representation of what you would see based on the ideas we hear from the community and what market conditions are. Again, visual representation. Like we've said from the very beginning, our main priority has been to get the police headquarters front and center, out of the ground, and the infrastructure that's needed to make that building happen, that facility happen. With that, I want to hand it over to John and let him talk about what we've done to start moving forward with that facility.
John, thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, Mr. City Manager. As you know, this project started back in 2016 with an initial facilities condition assessment and a spatial needs assessment. And these studies found, not surprisingly, that the Seventh Avenue TPD facility was in need of critical and noncritical repairs and significantly undersized for the scope of their current operations. So the initial spatial needs assessment and a follow-up spatial needs assessment provided us with the rough size of the facility. And then the project team took that rough size and translated that rough footage to come up with an initial opinion of probable cost. And of course, the economy has changed significantly over the past eight years, and therefore so has the estimated cost. Once the commission selected the Northwood Mall as the new site for the TPD headquarters project, we immediately began demolition and infrastructure installation. And so this next series of slides that we'll go through, they show some of the infrastructure progress to date. Again, the demolition of the 500,000 square foot mall, the retail shops, the Italian restaurant, and the bank on the corner was completed. Underground water, sewer, and stormwater pipes have been installed. Electrical conduits have been installed. We've run fiber optic cable from City Hall here in City Hall all the way out to the Northwood site. We've got roads, we've got curbs, we've got gutters, we've got the first lift of asphalt in. The public parking lot, which borders Tharp Street, is in progress as well. This is going to have public EV charging stations, lighting, sidewalks, landscaping, all are underway. And then the new state mandated stormwater pond off of Boone Boulevard is also currently under construction, which is going to further improve water quality leaving the site. So now moving from that general overall site development into the TPD building and campus construction more specifically, we are really excited to present the architect's renderings based on the recently completed 60% design. And as we scroll through these renderings, I'm going to highlight just a few of the many amenities that the new TPD headquarter campus will have. So this new facility is going to include 137,000 square foot main headquarters building, 37,000, 37,000 square foot state-of-the-art, 20-lane firing range and officer training facility, 32,000 square foot fleet and rolling asset storage building. And bringing the fleet asset, rolling assets and repair and firing range opportunities in-house is going to reduce operating costs and officer downtime. From the front, the new facility will appear as three stories, and from the back, it will appear as four stories. It's going to feature a large community room that seats up to 250 people. This can be used by TPD. It can be used by the public for training, for city commission meetings, and other community events. Not only will we have that 250-person community room, we're going to have additional opportunities for flexible indoor and outdoor gathering space. Again, more ceremonies, more events, more public gatherings, even food trucks. So this building was designed to be modern and state-of-the-art. We tried to also reflect and retain the style and architecture of Tallahassee that we're used to, and it's going to meet the needs of the current scope of TPD's operations as well as the future projected scope. This building will be sustainable. It will be in compliance with your green building plan and your clean energy plan. Just for example, on day one, we will have 60 electric vehicle charging spots for TPD. And with the infrastructure already in place to convert to 100% EV charging for TPD vehicles, if so desired, we're also going to have a solar canopy over top of the central utility plant. Not only will this building be sustainable, it's going to be resilient, designed to withstand a category four hurricane and designed to last 100 years. The current cost estimate based on that 60% design is $135 million. For your information, let me just share some comparable local projects with you, such as the FSU College of Business that we're all familiar with on Gaines Street, the Legacy Building. So the FSU project, for example, as you may know, was originally estimated to come in at $65 million in 2013, and with a projected completion date of 2018. So it has since increased to $88 million in 2022, then to $130 million, and now $160 million. We've also got the State Emergency Operations Center out of Southwood, which is estimated at $180 million. And we've got the Florida Department of Agriculture Headquarters Building off of Connor, which is estimated at $208 million. Not only did we compare to external projects, we compared to internal city projects as well. For example, the Southside Transit Center that we were all at this morning, and the Senior Center. And we compared that on not only a total, but also on a square foot, dollar per square foot basis. Based on all of this information and eight years of work in sharpening our pencils and scope reductions and competitively solicited, you know, bids and subcontractors, we're confident that our estimated cost is valid. It's consistent with those other projects. We do expect the final cost to come in in August of this year. That'll be based on actual competitive hard bids. And with the market stabilizing, we don't expect to see those unprecedented increases like everybody in the industry has experienced over the past few years. And this final cost will come in the form of a guaranteed maximum price, guaranteed maximum price. So guaranteed maximum price means that the construction contractor assumes the risk. If the cost goes over, the contractor assumes the risk, not the city. Looking ahead at the schedule, we expect vertical construction to start this November. So that's when you're going to see the actual buildings coming out of the ground with substantial completion near the end of 2025, along with a ribbon cutting ceremony. And then TPD can relocate and move into that facility in 2026. Again, very exciting project for the city. Again, designed to be open. It's inviting. It's community oriented. It will be beautiful. It will be sustainable. It will be a healthy building promoting employee wellness. It will be modern. It'll be state-of-the-art. It will be built to last 100 years, and it will be competitively priced. And it's going to fulfill a much-needed need, an overdue need for TPD and our officers. And this is just one of several landmark projects which will be under construction in 2024 and come alive in 2025, including, as I mentioned, but not limited to, that Southside Transit Center, Senior Center at Wallonie, International Processing Facility at the airport, and Fire Station 17. So with that, Devin and I are available to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, any other?
No, sir. We're available for questions. There may be speakers from the public.
All right. Are there any speakers?
There are speakers, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Bring up our first speaker.
Our first speaker is Mike Goldstein, followed by Sterling Gillis. As with the earlier portion of our meeting, each speaker has three minutes for remarks.
Get your name and address for the record, please, Mike.
Mike Goldstein, 113 St. Monroe Street, 124331. Been a while, guys. Say, welcome back to meetings, I guess. Well, I guess, great presentation, by the way, for that. Thanks, guys. No mention of inflation or cost from the construction, as mentioned in the news. So that's one question I had about. I wouldn't personally go to a meeting at a police station about meetings. I don't know. That seems cool, but I wouldn't go to that personally. And the arts seem to be a great way to actually prevent crime going forward. So this looks great, but it won't bring back ramblings or the warehouse that's being torn down on Gaines. So that's one thing to think about as well. And I guess the Sheridan's $8 million proposal from a few years ago is just sitting there. And the Talcie Mall developer that went with him as well. Just trying to understand, so the art stuff is not happening with this? Or was that something that is still part of this project? I'm just trying to understand from the layout, because I didn't comprehend from the plan of what's on there now. And it just seems confusing from everything that was been in the news to now, because it's the first I've seen anything of this proportion on here. And to compare it to the business school was kind of a nice comparison, but not the same with that cost analysis. Because I remember the last project Ajax was part of was actually the Union on campus, which is phenomenal and how it transpired from that. So that seems like a good project from there. But I'm just not seeing the ROI for the police station, because what's going to happen to the old site? Can we make that an art center, maybe? Because there's been no thought of what's going to happen to the previous site. So I'm just trying to understand with this going forward, what's going to happen to the Seventh Avenue and all the Lake Ellis stuff going on there? So that's really what I've been trying to figure out from all this. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Sterling Gillis, and then Bernard Stevens.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Sterling Gillis. I live at 626 Bond Cell Avenue, Tallahassee, Florida. I'm actually here to talk about the police station is beautiful. Everyone's excited about it. We love all the stuff that's going on with it. The only problems we're having is we don't feel like the neighborhood behind the police station is being looped in. We don't feel like we have a voice, and things keep happening over at the little area. I don't know if you could pull that up, where the stormwater pond is. I don't know if someone's available to do that. But there's a lot, a line of trees. It says we're going to preserve the trees and put affordable housing down there and run a road which will loop up with the Monticello Dip. I don't know if you drive through that area very often, but the traffic gets backed up quite substantially on that big hill. And then you're going to add more traffic going into that area. And then on top of it, then that goes around Gibbs, which is where my house is. We're going to have an influx of traffic, more housing. And then they ripped down all the trees that they said they were going to preserve, which they did not. I have a video on my phone of them tearing down the line of 20 mature live oaks. That pond area now is being washed out from the rainstorms that we've had, which has flooded the stormwater pond, which has caused the water to rise up 12 feet and put trash all in our backyard. So there's a few things that we want to be part of this project so that the people that live behind the mall there, the old mall, the new police station, are able to have something beautiful there. The mall was an eyesore. Now we want to see something replace that eyesore, not with another eyesore, but with something that the community can be proud of. And what we're seeing is a hodgepodge of ideas being thrown together without us really having much say-so in the project itself. So, you know, you can go to other cities and see where they have put new stuff in, where old stuff was, and they do a great job of it. And so you can learn from that. So we're afraid that that area is going to end up looking like the rest of Monroe Street with all the different buildings that don't really match each other. Which way are the buildings going to be facing that are the commercial properties? Are they going to be facing towards the police station? Are they going to be facing towards, you know, the little road that goes to Tharp? Or I forgot what the name of, Martin Luther King Boulevard. But it, there's a lot of confusion in the project, and it seems like we're not being kept appraised to what it's going to actually look like. I mean, I like the Venn diagrams. Those are neat. I mean, but they don't really show you what the project. This shows you what it looks like. It should have the whole project laid out so we can see it, you know, on, you know.
Thirty seconds remaining.
I'm done. Thanks.
You still have 30 seconds, if you'd like.
Well, that's basically all I had to say. I just feel like we're kind of left out, and we'd like to be more included, and we hope that we can be more included. We'd like to see things that are going to be put in place before they're decided upon. I know they said that we already had input in this, but they changed all the plans, and now we feel like we don't have input. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Bernard Stevens is the next speaker. He'll be followed by Stanley Sims.
Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
My name is Reverend Bernard Michael Stevens, Jr. I'm not giving you my address. I gave that to you too many times. So the problem that I have with this here is we also have down in the schedule section, it's about the last sentence down, while the costs were not precisely known until the project is competitively bid by the C-Mar. So here's the thing. We got $135 million up here, and you're saying that's going to be the estimate. Unless your documents is wrong to what I'm reading, then we clearly have a problem. How do you, first of all, start a project, number one, and you don't already have an idea of what you're going to spend? Or how you going to, how you going to do all of that? When a person buys a house, you know what they do? They go look at the land. Once they look at the land, they have an idea of what they want to spend within their budget. So you mean to tell me from the time you acquired this location that you didn't have not one time to bring it up in that budget meeting to say, "This is probably what we're going to need"? And then all of a sudden, you have ran through this because it's March and April, saying that somebody has competitively looked at the budget, and that's what you want to spend? This is nice. This is great. But you all are not getting the people the plan like they're supposed to. And that is becoming a problem and a frustration for the residents and everybody else. Because what you're doing is you're putting a lot of words and you're hiding things within your words. And we're not going to keep playing hide and go seek, okay? And we're not going to keep playing hide and go seek, okay? That's getting old, all right? The police deserve something new, I agree. We've been over there in that police station forever. But again, if you knew you was building one, this guy Reese Gold, once again, should have known all of this in the beginning. He did not discuss that with nobody, and not one budget meeting. Last time I recall, Mr. Matlow asked you all, do we have a final cost on what we're going to spend on that, or what is the budget? No, we don't. You bring it to the people, and now all of a sudden, it's up to you five again to get it popping. And then it's going to take you until the end of 2025 to get it over with. What's wrong with that, Reese Gold? There's a big problem with that. $275,000 a year, man, where's your decision making? How does that work? We continue to do stuff for the police department, and I want them to be benefited, but I have over 50 some firefighters who are still underpaid, and we have done nothing about that. What are you doing? What are you doing, John Daly? And this guy continues to brag every single commission meeting, oh, the firefighter's foundation, you know, they supported me the last couple of elections. This ain't about you, bro. This is about the people. We, the people, is in the Constitution. I'm going to say that once again. We, the people, that involves everybody who has a mouth to speak. Y'all going to give Mr. Sims the respect that he deserves, as he was a pastor, just in case y'all don't know. He was once upon a pastor when I was really, really young, and I remember him at one of my best buddy's funeral, Reverend Louis James Parker. He told them people, he said, Louis was my friend, and I ain't going to rush his funeral. So Mr. Sims understands the foundations of communication, but when he seems to be interrupted or challenged, that would spark anybody in a sense of emotion. I digress my time.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker Stanley Sims, and then Grace Glass.
Name and address for the record, please.
1320 Avondale Way. We need a new police station. I appreciate our TPD officers. We have our good days and our challenging days. But Officer Moore is a damn good cop. When he sees me, hey, Mr. Sims, how you doing? How's that son of yours? Mr. Officer Moore, how's your, how's your family? I want to call some more names, but I don't want to put them on the hit list. They already know about me and Mr. Moore is okay, so I thought it was safe to say his So this is not an anti-police thing. I was marching, Black Lives Matter, on my way to the governor's office, shortness of breath fella, I don't know that cop's name, but he ran to his car, got me some water, laid on my chest, talked me into getting into that ambulance that I don't want to get into. I appreciate our law enforcement on. So it's not about you, but it's about fiscal responsibility. This is about first responders' equity of right treatment. I want you guys to have the best. I want you to be fully engaged, because I don't know what day an unknown bullet might hit my head, my son's head, or my wife's head, or anyone's head. So that is not what's on the table here. What I am glad to hear from Mr. Powell, him to say, that is a 135 max, because we never know. That's what's on the table here. Can we trust what you tell us?
30 seconds remaining.
That's what's on the table, credibility. Now, fat man to a bag of doughnuts, ma'am, you there? They're going to reach out to you. They're going to ask you what your concerns are, but they will not me. You are privileged.
Our next speaker, please.
Grace Glass is our next speaker, and then Randy Dinker.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, sir. My name is Grace Glass. I live at 2000 Meridian Road, apartment 115. And of course, I am all for Back in the Blue. My brother is Long Forest, the town in Mavart County. My concerns are, we are not prioritizing the major issues happening in Tallahassee. We have serious issues, we have robbery on the increase, unemployment happening, poverty skyrocketing, and it's wonderful to have a new building coming forth, it's wonderful, it's beautiful, but our priority needs first to supply and to support law enforcement here. Our population is 200,000 people, we have less than 400 officers working for TPD. There is a recruitment program by the government that we know have already passed. This month, two years ago, the governor signed the recruitment law bill, the law that passed, and his initiative was to get those who are from various states to come into Florida, be a part of the local departments here to save, to make our city safer, to bring harmony and security. I don't know what was the reason for increasing our taxes, our property taxes by 8.5%, but it was unnecessary. The agreement was increase our property taxes for 20 more officers for TPD. Why? When the governor had already allocated $125 million for the very same initiative to recruit more officers? So our priority to build this new facility, wonderful, the timing is off. There needs to be morale with the officers, there needs to be more support, more, more strength, because our cities are not safe. I have never heard in my life of being in, working for congressmen, governors and whatnot, I have never heard citizens so angry in my life at every single meeting. I get it, you can't supply, you can't make everybody happy, I understand that. But what I'm saying is to be more logistic when it comes to putting this building here, wonderful, again, as mentioned before, we've been here for 100 years in that same building in the, for the TPD. It's good to make renovations, have a new property, but before anything goes, the city's streets in Tallahassee need to become much more safer. They're not safe, no one feels safe. Maybe you do, because you have security, you have the influence, but citizens here are not feeling safe. The priority needs to be to first to strengthen the morale, strengthen the force of TPD, build that transparency between the community and the police department. They don't trust them anymore, there's no harmony anymore. We need to work on those kind of conversations, those programs, dare and everything else, that's good almighty, good, 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 good. But at the end of the day, the trust between TPD and the community needs to be restored. That's what needs to come about, that's what needs to come together. Again, I'm all for it. And my other case was, Ms. Diane, you mentioned a verse last meeting, and it was wonderful you mentioned Bible scripture.
You have about 30 seconds.
I want to mention a verse to you, it's Luke chapter 4, verse 18, it says, what man, says which of you intending to build a tower, does sit down, doesn't sit down first to count the cost, whether he has enough to finish it? The wisest thing is to sit down first, see what we have to finish this project, 135, it's been increasing two years, four years, there needs to be a set price for this and to go for. I think sometimes some of you think that Tallahasseans are a bit stupid.
Thank you very much.
They're not. Thank you very much as well.
Time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Randy Dinker is next, and then Will Crowley.
How many more speakers do we have on the side? Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Crowley's the last speaker.
Okay. Your name and address for the record, please. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. Randy Dinker, 552 East Georgia Street. I sent all of you a letter last week, I looked at the new plan, and there's some things on there I really like, and there's some things that just leave me with questions, and I'm hoping to get some answers, which is why I came down today. So question number one is, is the city going to retain ownership over the entire parcel, or is the city going to sell off parcels or be a landlord, or how is that going to work? Because my fear is if the city does not retain ownership, the city will not have any control over what goes in there and what happens there. And I think most of us in this room know that Tallahassee doesn't need any more tattoo parlors and marijuana cannabis shops and fast food restaurants. We'd like to see something nice. Second thing is that the plan doesn't say whether there's going to be a design code, so I'd like to know the answer. Are we going to have a design code, or is it just going to be, anybody can build whatever they want regardless of, you know, how cheap the construction is or how tacky it looks? Because I'd like to see a design code of some sort to, you know, create a whole campus kind of look, which is the word we've been using a lot. Next question is, I see that the new plan has a performing arts center on it again. Where's the money coming from that? Are we reuniting with the Sheridans again, or is that off the table, and where is that money coming from? My next question is the energy code. The current city energy plan requires all city, new city infrastructure to be carbon neutral, and we've been told by staff when we met with them that the new police station will not be carbon neutral. So my question is, can we plant some more trees on the site to try to offset some of that carbon? And another thought that I had that I thought would be great is to put in solar panels in the parking lot that could charge the future electric cars for the police and maybe add some energy to the building itself. Oops, lost my place. Okay, the parking garage. So I was wondering, because as you all know, most of you were on the commission when we did the parking garage financial analysis for Midtown, and at that time, the city was going to own it, and it was going to be run by a private entity, and the financial analysis showed it would have been a real money loser for the city. Oh, I got the yellow light. So I'd like to know, has a financial analysis had been done? Is this a private, a public-private venture like the Midtown Garage, or is this going to be private or totally public, or what that is? And has an analysis been done? Or is the city going to end up, you know, if it doesn't work out, paying for it? And from the last, my last question is about the buildings themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Decker.
Oops.
You're at the three.
Can I just finish this one thought?
Please, five seconds, we have other speakers.
All right, I'm going to make it five seconds.
Please.
Will the buildings face in the street or out from the street? Is my last question.
Thank you.
If I can get some questions today, that'd be great.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Will Crowley. This is the last speaker I have for the item.
Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. My name is Will Crowley, I'm a City of Tallahassee resident. At a meeting in February, when the majority of this commission sought to quote, "send a message" to their political opponents, I suggested that the whole charade was just a distraction from mismanagement of this new TPD site. I noted that the budget had already gone up, that spending, significant spending had already occurred, and yet we weren't seeing a lot of actual development there. And I predicted that they would come back to ask for 120 million total. I'm here to say that I was wrong, and I'm sorry, I want to apologize, I was wrong. They want 135 million now. 135 million, that's like a 238% increase? Wow. Now, costs going up is not unusual in itself, especially with the inflation issue we've seen. But this type of increase raises red flags for the average person. You have to understand that, you can't hand wave it away. Now, maybe I could be convinced that this is all above board, that this is just the way it works. It would be a tough sell and would require a great deal of trust. But that's the problem here. The trust has been broken. We have watched the majority of this city commission use the public's wealth as their own personal piggy bank, handing out money and major appointments and no-bid contracts to their political boosters left and right. Now, I go online, and I see that Ajax, the company behind this project, which has, you know, been delayed, installed, and ignored folks' concerns about the trees, I see that they have supported the reelection campaigns of the majority, the prevailing majority, that will no doubt, mark my words, force this through. What do you think that's all about? It is unreasonable to expect the public to shoulder this massive cost increase in this And frankly, I think you should be embarrassed for asking. I'll just, I'll just close with a question, a question that I can't direct to this commission because I already know the answer that they would provide. But this, this question I will ask instead to the folks who have supported this majority over the years and are thinking about supporting them again. Is this what you signed up for?
You're at 20 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
No further speakers on this item.
All right, let's open it up for discussion. Remember, the recommended action before us is to simply accept the update on the site. This is a fluid project that is still under design and development, and move forward from there. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. The one is, Mr. City Manager, how does this facility and its projected cost compare to comparable facilities in other cities that either are under construction or have been completed?
Thank you. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Let me reiterate what John shared, and he can share some other information as well. We've talked a lot about needing to get to a particular stage in the design to be able to have a good handle on costs. I will tell you that I think we have a good handle. I feel very comfortable that we have a handle on the cost at this point, that's been very volatile. And then we, of course, validate, so our contractor goes and he seeks those, they seek those bids, and we're casting that at 135 million dollars, and that's everything, that's not leaving anything accounted for. And then we compare locally, because that matters. Construction is a regional cost, it's not ubiquitous, depending upon the region, the cost can be higher and lower. And so one good benchmark, I thought a really good benchmark, because it immediately reflected what we all lived through and have experienced in terms of inflationary costs, COVID-related costs, was the College of Business. We work closely with Florida State University, as you know, and we talked, we talk constantly about those things. And so you saw that project move from a $65 million original to ultimately today is purported, as we know, is represented in the media and according to FSU, to be 160 million. It's very consistent with what we see here. As we look around the state, there have been some projects completed recently. You can't look back a few years, because the world was different a few years ago. We have to look at today. We know there's a Fort Lauderdale project that is very comparable, Hollywood, as well as Northport, there are others, John may have more details, but we look at both the size and in terms of like a per square feet. We know that space drives the cost of a construction project. It's not the only driver, it's probably too simple of a measure, but it's an indicator. John, do you, do you have those values of the Fort Lauderdale headquarters with you? They're all very, very similar, Commissioner, in terms of costs. They are, in fact, more in some cases, and I apologize, I don't have them on the top of my head. John, you don't have them? Okay, we'll get, we can get that to you. But that's part of the validation, we look locally at other public sector buildings, it indicates that that's, the price that we're seeing today is probably right. John, I would like to clarify, because I think maybe it was misunderstood, the price that we're showing today is an estimate at 60% design. We've got a little bit to go before we get to a point where we can get hard bids and convert that to a contract, that then the contractor becomes responsible for any inflationary cost increases or changes. We're close, we're within months of doing that, but this is an indication, as we stand here today, we do feel good that the market has stabilized. And if you rewind the clock two years, even a year, there was no confidence in the market and in terms of pricing, whoever you might ask. And so that's, that's a better feeling, but the inflationary cost increases, the COVID-related cost increases, they have acted as a ratchet effect, we know that. They have increased, they're not coming back. No one in our business believes that costs are declining, they believe they have stabilized, that's, that's a good thing. But costs have ratcheted up, whether it's in construction or things that we just consume on a daily basis. And so this is where we find ourselves, and we do believe it is a good reflection of the cost for the facility of the TPD headquarters.
Okay. And Pro Tem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. City Manager, could you talk about the funding sources that you're anticipating for this facility?
Yes, sir. John mentioned, and it makes sense, obviously, we, we operate lots of different services for the community, a lot of utility services, we do have many, many capital projects, and you match the funding to the life of asset. In this case, this will be a 100-year building, we'll build it to be a 100-year facility. There are things that we will not incorporate on day one that we know we will need in the future. John alluded to having charging stations for only a small portion of the fleet that operates as our police department. We have hundreds and hundreds of vehicles that are necessary to patrol our city, and they, based on our direction, they'll all be electrified. And so we build it in, but we don't build it day one. And so the building will be a 100-year building that will be intended to expand as the need arises. And then accordingly, we would finance that over a period of time. And so we would issue debt, 30-year debt, we have really good borrowing power, sub-5% loan rates as we speak, that's a great thing for the City of Tallahassee. And so we would match that long-life asset with a long-life loan.
And that would then be built into, the repayment would be built into the annual budget?
Yes, sir. And thank you for the question. So the budget is... So the budget is, there is no request to increase the budget related to this. There is, there is no extra budgetary request as it relates to it because it will be incorporated in that way. Now, of course, my staff, the budget staff, finance staff, work closely with the Treasury Clerk's Office to shape overall our level of, our amount of debt as well as our debt service. And they've been working on that. And the good news is that the shape of our debt service declines naturally after this year, 2025 and 2026. So it creates a fit as you're, you know, planning your long-term capital needs and you're fitting it together in terms of debt service, like our mortgage at home might be. And so that fits well, and that's, that's how, that's how we would put the budget together.
Okay. Just a couple of more questions, Mr. Mayor. So how long do you think it's going to take before we get to that additional 40% threshold where we can start putting this out for a hard bid and get?
Let me, let me ask John.
Final cost.
He'll have a more precise answer. John, when do we get to, I believe 90% is our, our next mark to get hard bids? When do we expect that?
90%? Well, 90% is in May, early May.
Early May? And at that point, we would, Ajax would go out to solicit hard bids, and that would start developing the guaranteed maximum price contract?
Correct.
So we would begin that in May, sir?
Okay. And at that point, then, the, there will, once we take the bids, there will be a guaranteed maximum price where the contractor, if they go over that amount, they assume the responsibility for those costs above the GMP?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. And then lastly, Mr. Mayor, I did want to get some input on some of the questions that were asked earlier concerning the input from the neighborhood and the community about what they would like to see on the site outside of, or other than, the police headquarters. I think they, they are owed that. We are owed that as a community. And how will their input be gathered and taken into consideration? And maybe even the questions that Ms. Dinkler asked, if someone could maybe get with her or respond to those questions at the appropriate time?
Yes, sir. In fact, I'm glad those came up.
Okay.
There's a certain amount of ordering happening here. So we've got the 30-acre site. There was a lot of gathering of information from the public about how the site ultimately lays out. And that helped us design the road network and kind of lay out the plat, if you will. It's not technically a plat, but it, it looks and feels like a plat. And so that's in place. And we've said all along, and so that, that becomes a little bit, you know, stalled because that's where that is. But the police department headquarters would be built first, and those other actions related to those out parcels are yet to come.
Okay.
And so Ms. Dinkler asked a number of questions, good questions, that the basic answers are we don't know yet. And that will certainly be something that this commission takes action on in terms of orientation of building, design standards, all great questions. We're not there yet. So we've not traveled past that point. Lots of time to get input, engagement. Devin's on point on that, Devin Levens. And we've, we had a couple citizens. We'll certainly reach out and engage, and that is, will come. And we've anticipated sequentially, as you develop, as you build the police department, then you move into those out parcels. I will say that we've estimated the cost of the police department. We have not netted that with any value of the land that could be sold at the Northwood site or the original site for this discussion. Originally, early on, we, we expected we would sell the original site. We've not gone that far in conclusion because the city commission hasn't acted upon that. You may very well say, we don't want to sell it, or we want to manage it in a different way. So those decisions are yet to come. I will tell you, if you want to monetize the value of that real estate, it's considerable, and it would net against the price and the cost of this project. But we're not quite there yet. We'll certainly make sure we engage. We don't have largely the answers that Ms. Dinkler was asking about because we're not there.
Right.
But those are all good questions, relevant questions, and all ones that will be addressed as we move forward with the directions of the commission.
On point. When it comes to design standards, we still maintain 100%, correct?
Cover code.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, it is.
But whether the parcel was sold or not, we would still have control over design standards because we are the ones that are approving it at the end of the day, of what we want it to look like, what it wanted to be. I actually agree. I love storefront on, on both roads, quite honestly. I've always scratched my head when we have retail. It's got its back towards the major artery and, you know, the storefront's with interior. And all of these type of items will come up through the process as we move forward with final design. And I think they're very valid. What does it look like? All the way down to, you know, the private industry's coming in. What is that business? Yes, we can have, we can have an opinion on that as well, of what type of business will be in those private sectors. And that should, that should be discussed openly, publicly, and everyone should have the opportunity to participate. So I think these are great questions that we heard tonight. And we're at the beginning of this, and everything should be taken into consideration. Absolutely.
Okay, that's it for me.
Sure. We're just going, we'll go down the line, give everybody ample opportunity. Commissioner Williams-Cox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you all for the, for the presentation. I have a, my entree to this was 2018, and at that time, the price tag was $60 million in a different part of town. But there was a concerted effort to not let it happen in that part of town. And so this opportunity has come for us to put it in the center of town. And we took input from the community, and the input overwhelmingly chose this site. So let's just, let's just walk it, I'm going to walk it like I talk it, because this is when I came on board, and I was a part of it. I must confess, I did not think that the, the location that had been discussed was indeed the optimal place to put it, on the south side, which was where it was originally planned for, for $60 million. Okay, 2018. Here we are six years later, still talking about it. And while we've been talking and going through pandemics, the price has gone up, the cost has gone up. And if we, if we stop now and continue to talk about it, it's going to continue to go up. So I want to, I want us to just be realistic about what we're, what we're dealing with and remember that not so long ago, yeah, it was 60 million. That was a different time and place at that time. And we're here tonight, and I want to confirm this with the city manager, our ceiling is 135, 135 million, that's the ceiling.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Commissioner, I'm glad you're asking that question. That's our best estimate today. That's not the ceiling.
Okay.
It could be lower.
Exactly.
Hey, I'm an optimist. I'm hoping it's lower because it'll go out to competitive bid. But it can move. That's our best estimate at 60% design as we get to 90. That's when we'll establish the ceiling.
Okay.
But this is yet, yet to come.
Okay. So thank you for that clarification. I also wanted to get some information, perhaps from Mr. Darryl Jones's office, if, if, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, about the minority participation in this project. What do we anticipate that to be? Because it is not just about building a building, it's about the economics of it all as well. So, Mr. Mayor, would you allow Mr. Jones to come forward and share that information with us?
Mr. Jones, we'll put you on the hot seat. Come on, come on forward. I think Commissioner's got some questions.
Yes.
Could you share with us any work that has been done in regards to making sure that we have adequate minority participation? And what is our goal? I know that, again, Ajax was selected, but they are also doing mentoring with some, with the minority firm. I'm aware of that as well. But can you kind of talk to us a little bit about what is happening to make sure that going forward, that minorities will receive some of this business?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and Commissioner, City Manager, ever since the site has been identified and the contractor has been identified at the direction of our director, Keith Bowers, and also at the supervision of our deputy city manager, and in cooperation with Ted Parker and Ajax and Mr. Powell, we have created an aggressive plan of engagement with our minority and women-owned businesses. With a price tag of $135 million, potentially, that could be as much as $30 million made available to minority and women-owned businesses. The good part about that, our campaign of engagement with our minority and women-owned businesses will help us to meet that goal. Already, we have already had engagements with our minority and women-owned businesses regarding the projects. One of the things that we enjoy most is that with Ajax, they're going to apply the 14-9 aspirational goal on a construction project of this size, which is an aggregate of about 23% at totaling about $30 million. They're going to make that application across all of the bid packages and the specifications on that job. So that means it will be 14-9 on HVAC, 14-9 on electrical, 14-9 on roofing, and all of the specifications. So that means we will have even better, an even better level of success to meet that MWB utilization goal. Also, our office at the direction of our director will be working aggressively with those businesses that we will have identified to connect them with what we know are important resources. Already, we're working with John Baker and the family, the Family First Plan to make certain that those loan dollars that have already been identified by the City of Tallahassee will be made available to those businesses so that they'll be able to finance this project. We'll also connect them with other resources in our community, like Career Source, to help them with identifying their workforce and also helping to offset our workforce costs so that our minority and women-owned businesses can have an even more compelling and competitive prices to provide as a part of the competitive bid project, process. Also, we'll also be connecting them with our FAMU Smart Steps Loan Program that we already have at the FAMU Federal Credit Union, which will also help them to finance their project. Also, we'll be connecting them with the FAMU Small Business Development Center, getting that type of technical assistance so that they can be able to provide the best bids possible. And that is, and we've been, already started on that work with Ajax. There will also be a workforce component that will be done in cooperation with Tempo and the Lively Vocational Technical College. But all of that is being facilitated by our office because we realize that at $30 million, the economic impact and the jobs that will be created associated with the project, we want to make certain that the minority and women-owned businesses that are engaged will be able to take advantage of this procurement opportunity as a landmouth project.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to make sure that we understand, that this is not just about a building. This is about the economic development and about the businesses that can participate. And if there's anyone out there who's interested and they are not already certified through your office, they definitely need to reach out to your office and get certified. Don't wait until, you know, things start happening. Let's get, get ready now.
And also based upon the guidance that has been given by both this commission and the Blueprint IA Board with our recently ratified consolidated MWBE policy, not only will our OEB firms qualify for this project, but also those firms that are certified through the Office of Supply Diversity through the state of Florida.
Okay, thank you.
But that means we'll have just that many more businesses available to meet the procurement goals that we've identified on this project.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing that to.
On point, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem?
I also wanted to highlight the partnership that Ajax has with Tempo. I think they may be one of the only employers in the city, Darryl, correct me if I'm wrong, that has that partnership. And for those who don't know, Tempo is a city-sponsored program where we work with individuals in communities where they need that kind of employment experience, to be able to take care of themselves and a family. And so we're talking about individuals who will be in need of employment to, again, be able to take care of themselves and, and Ajax has committed to that partnership. And so those will be jobs created for those young people in this community. I just wanted to highlight that because it is an important part of what we'll be doing. And that is to address the crime issue in our community. A lot of those young people have had scrapes with crime, and so we're trying to make sure that they have opportunities for themselves and not have to revert back to that kind of activity in our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Commissioner Matlow?
I.
Oh, you still have the floor, Commissioner Williams-Cox. I'm sorry. I thought you were done. I apologize.
I'm almost done. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank staff for providing us with this presentation tonight and giving us, you know, some of us a visual. So thank you for providing us with the visual, visual piece of it because we've been in a lot of our town hall meetings, some really rough ones, and as well as some of the ones where we've gotten some community feedback. And I know we're going, we're looking forward to getting more community feedback, not just from the community that's next to this site, but the whole city. Because this is an investment from everyone in the city, not just the neighbors who live near, near where it's going to be. And I look forward to, to that. And I want to thank city manager, deputy city manager Barber, for y'all's leadership in making this happen now. I know, city manager, I know you're a finance major. I know you can count money in your sleep, and you can figure out where this is going to happen. And I know you didn't bring me, and listen, I'm making it personal, you didn't bring me anything that you haven't vetted because you know what, you know what happens when that happens, right? We have long, good conversations. So thank you for bringing forward your best estimate. We're, we're looking forward to being an outstanding, state-of-the-art, best in the, best of the best police station and police campus. I'm calling it a campus because it's not just going to be a building. We saw in the master plan the things that are going to be around it. And I'm glad to see that the performing arts has not fallen off because, you know, if we're not able to get it done in one way, we'll work on trying to get it done in other ways. And the affordable housing piece is really, really important because someone talked about our priorities. Our priorities, our first priority is public safety. Our second priority is affordable housing, or housing. And I'm looking at Ms. Williams, they're going to, they're going to talk to us a little bit about that. So I just wanted to make sure that we, our priorities are spelled out in our strategic plan. And if you haven't had an opportunity to review it, I suggest that you go online and review it. I shared it with some other cities on a class that I was in here recently because they didn't have one. And ours is so robust, they, they, they're sharing it and perhaps emulating it in, for their city. So thank you all for, for this opportunity to see what's going on. And I look forward to updates and adjustments downward as needed. I'm asking you to sharpen your pencils. Where's, where's Robert? Like, we asked, we asked the budget office to sharpen their pencils and bring us, bring us in under budget. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to that happening with this, with this particular project. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for bringing this item back today. And, you know, as you know, I think I'm probably going on three years asking for, for a price tag on this, so it's good to see it coming into a landing spot. I did have a question, and thank you for clarification that 135 was the estimate because we haven't bidded it out yet. I just wanted to clarify, does 135 include any of the current site work and property purchase, or is that in addition to what we've already spent on the site?
Mr. Manager?
Let me ask John to help me with that. I know the 135 is fully loaded. It includes furnishings. Sometimes that's excluded in projects like this. It's soup to nuts, closeout, all the checklist. John, what, what else is in that?
Yeah, that's, Mr. City Manager, that's correct. This, this includes the construction, furnitures, fixtures, equipment. It includes allowances for those items that we don't know the exact cost of yet. It includes contingencies for things that we, for those unknowns we expect, and then also for those unknown unknowns that we also know always come up. It also includes escalation allowance to make sure that, you know, this is, you know, this is the cost, you know, looking forward throughout the duration of the project. So this is a fully-loaded construction estimate. This does not include the site work worth of 30 acres.
Okay. I just wanted to.
Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you. I just wanted clarity on that because I think at our, our workshop, we were somewhere near $22 million in, plus the purchase of the property at $8 million. We are, we're already $30 million in on the site. So just the police station and the site work would bring us to 165 million if they come in with our estimates. It'll probably go over because that's how construction projects tend to work. And then we'll borrow the money, which will, I mean, this is north of $200 million for the site. I understand the argument that you could recoup some of that investment in the future. I say that all to say, this project is astronomically expensive. When we spend nearly $200 million as a community, I don't think it's right that we put that number out to the public 30 days before it's going to go out to bid. That's something we should have long community conversations about, and those are the conversations I've been asking to have at our budget workshop year after year after year. So over a year ago, I said this project would cost about $140 million, and I could do that just looking at the cost of these types of facilities and the more extravagant ones and where those costs landed. So I fully support building a new police station. I supported moving it out of Town South. I thought that was the wrong location. I supported buying the Northwood parcel to build it here. I think it's a great location. I've been to the current facility. We desperately need a new one, but we do need to be fiscally responsible in how we build. Do we need the office space? Do we need evidence lockers? Yes, we need all these things that it takes. But have we gone too far? When we start saying things like state-of-the-art and top-of-the-line, to me, that's just dollars and dollars stacking up. And a new building is not going to make our community more safe. We need a building that's going to serve the most basic functions of what the police department needs and do that within reason. But when we get to a price that's nearly $1,000 plus per resident, $350,000 per sworn officer, it's just an imbalance in what we're investing in our building infrastructure than what we're investing in actual people, the people doing the actual work. So I hear the majority, so I'll say my piece at that. But when Northeast Park went over budget, we brought back options. I think that's what we should have done here. Construction costs are escalating. What could we build for 60 million, 80 million, 120 million? And look at the options and see if we're really spending our money appropriately. But this has, this train left the station so fast, that as pointed out earlier, there's still trees that were cut down in the mock-up as something that we're going to preserve. So let's have the community conversations and bring people in and do it appropriately. So I'll leave that on the cost, but I do want to talk about the site generally because when we bought Northwood, we talked about the tremendous opportunity for visioning its future, and I still believe we have that opportunity. I think we need to be more ambitious in what we want to do there with public land. All around Northwood, you have restaurants, you have retail. All down North Monroe, we have, as mentioned earlier, smoke shops, beer shops, shops, those sorts of things. But we have this unique opportunity to provide public services in this area that we haven't before. I know, Mr. Mayor, we talked about a new daycare facility, a municipal 24/7 daycare facility. What an awesome opportunity at Northwood Mall to have a place that's city-run to bring your kids. What a great asset that would be to our officers that can drop their kids off right across the street from work, visit them during the day and pick them up. You know, what other innovative ideas can we have to use public space for public good when we talk about parks, when we talk about libraries, when we talk about basic services like going to the DMV? We've seen other communities master plan, great public spaces, and I think we have the opportunity to do this. So I don't think we should be moving down the line where our anticipation is we're going to sell this off to a hotel or a mixed-use developer, you know. The entirety of North Monroe is going to get redeveloped in the next 50 years. There's plenty of space for the private sector to buy in and be a part of the investment we're making. But I very strongly believe that we need to slow the pace on the drawing board, bring back the community conversation, and see what public benefit and public good we can bring out of this property. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. The item says that the project sites and scope were significantly reduced from the initial 2017 needs assessment study to mitigate the rampant nationwide cost of inflation. I mean, we knew that prices were going up. I'm wondering if someone could speak to how the scope has been reduced already.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, John can speak the best about that. I'll ask him to share some thoughts. But typical with a project like this, you're going to start with a, you know, bigger, more macro look. Space is a very big driver of cost. And so clearly, we need enough space, enough functionality in the new facilities to serve the department today. It can't be less than the department needs today. And then we have to anticipate, how do you expand it in the future since this will be a long-life building? So a lot of emphasis went into that kind of space management. Does it serve the needs of the department today? And frankly, the facility today doesn't meet the needs of the department. So we're having to catch up as it relates to training, as it relates to fleet management. So that was kind of the viewpoint that, John, I don't know what more specifics you can add, but that was the idea, the approach of we only build the space we need for the department's needs today. But we are catching up relatively speaking, but we're not building in excess because we know that's cost. John, if you want to add something to that.
That's absolutely correct, Mr. City Manager. It's a real iterative process where, you know, you start with the concept and the conceptual design and kind of rough sketches and ideas. And same time, you have the spatial needs assessment where you work, you know, hand-in-hand with TPD to say, you know, what is it you're doing now? What is it you project that you're going to need? And literally, as Mr. City Manager, you said, you're taking space and you're condensing it, and you're trying to make it more efficient, and you're trying to take, you know, just as an example, conference rooms. And instead of having, you know, five conference rooms, you have three, and you do programming or scheduling so that you can reduce the size, and you look at the number of stories and the configuration, and you just, you know, you value engineer and you sharpen your pencil, but you do so without impacting the ability of TPD to do their job. So it's just a lot of intense kind of back-and-forth work and iterations.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add to that, too. Just so there's no misunderstanding, this isn't going to be a luxury building. It will be nice as it needs to be, but it will be very standard. There was a lot of emphasis in terms of, I think John mentioned in his presentation that there would be some brick incorporated into it to make sure it fits Tallahassee, brick on the exterior. But there are no luxury appointments in this. This will be a building that meets the needs, the space needs, only the space needs, with the idea that you could expand in the future. And so all of those things went into it because, as Commissioner Matlow indicated, we've all lived in the world of these rising prices. We know the prices are rising, and so we have to be very judicious in terms of what we are attempting to buy.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. Could you tell me what are, Mr. City Manager, what are the core need, facility needs? You know, when we're talking about a police station, I understand there's a lot that happens there, and there's a lot that has happened off-site, you know, training facilities that we want to bring onsite. But could you just talk me through specifically, you know, what are the core needs that a police station has?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have that expertise, but the chief can describe the needs of the department. I would not do it justice. Chief, can you help with that answer? Obviously, we have administrative functions, we have, which is numerous. We have training functions, and we have fleet functions. Those are kind of some core things, but more detail would be better.
And let me rephrase the question as well, too. We are not building just a police station. We are building a public safety complex that includes community rooms as well with public access to it. It's not just a police station. Currently, right now, we do not have access at the police station for community meetings and whatnot because there's physically not the space, so.
Right, yeah. My biggest room holds 40 people if they're standing.
Well, if I, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would like my answer, my question answered first, and then you can address the mayor's question because mine is specific to what are the core needs that the police need.
Sure. Be happy to answer.
From a space.
The department does a plethora of things within it. Forensics is huge. So the things that we do, the lab that we're building that's included in this is being, it's not what it needs to be, but the space is there, and much of the equipment we're getting on the front end so that we can save money on the long end. But we hope to, in the future, be a regional lab. That's just one example, where we can take some of the stuff and some of the weight off of FDLE because everything goes to them for the entire state. So our forensic section, our lab, will be, eventually be state-of-the-art, and it will be an asset for the entire region. Our community rooms are a huge part of this, and they're incorporated in all areas of the department. Our museum is something that they can come in and do. But our investigative, our interview rooms, you know, the space for that is something we need. Our training facility is something that's going to save us hundreds of thousands of dollars because we have to drive vehicles out to the academy now. We have to rent space out at the academy now. We have to send people out there every single day, you know, for training. We're going to be able to do all of that in-house now. So that's going to save us a ton of money over the, as well as time for the officers to get them back out. Fleet, the fleet building, the ability to work, you know, on our vehicles there, have all of our vehicles there, where we don't have to go to fleet and get, you know, the command bus when we need to take it somewhere. So, you know, all of those things are just a few examples of that space that's within it. Our records section will be, now be truly accessible to the public. When they come in, they'll be able to go right to the counter and deal with that. We'll have kiosks within the building that people can go in and access, do reports, you know, those kind of things where we have one old one right now. Those will be, you know, much more updated, the technology has advanced, obviously, leaps and bounds. So all of that is being incorporated into that space, and that's just a couple of examples. I don't know if that, is that sufficient?
No, that's very helpful.
All right.
Thank you.
On point, real quick, Commissioner Porter. One thing that you did not mention that I understand to be a huge issue right now is also evidence storage and the amount of space that you currently do not have adequately.
Sure.
You know, to be able to move forward with the growth of our community and everything, we need more additional space. You're doing a great job now, but we desperately need more evidence space.
I couldn't have said it better, yes. Our evidence storage area.
I remember that from the tour that you gave us.
Right. They do an incredible job of keeping up with 144,000 items that they have. But, yeah, they're, that's a drastically needed area for space.
If I could add, too, I remember there being complaints about the exercise facilities at the current site or lack thereof, maybe.
Correct. Yeah, that's why I giggled. You know, yeah, our weight room is tiny, but the incorporation of a wellness center, again, not extravagant, but it certainly will enhance the ability of our officer wellness program and our officer wellness coordinator to facilitate those type of things, to do light-duty recovery and rehab there within the facility, which we just, we don't, we can't even think about that right now. So the new facility will incorporate space for all of those things and the equipment that's necessary to do a lot of that rehab in-house, which, again, will save us time and money and get officers back to the street quicker.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. I don't have any follow-up questions. Thank you very much. So I just want to make clear, you know, I support, I think it's clear we need a new police station. I think we, this was before my time, but we moved in the right direction as a city when we selected this site. I agree with comments from folks in the public and Commissioner Matlow. I wish this had been brought to us sooner and that we had had the opportunity to be more involved as we could have anticipated costs increasing, which we did, to, as I always say, discuss what our options are based on the priorities we have as a community, the needs, of course, of TPD. And this is a significant investment, and so that is concerning, and I feel like I need to register that. That being said, moving on from that site. When we talk about the site as a whole, I would love us to have the conversation as well about what our plans are for the current police station site. And I think that if, you know, I would love to see that conversation. I know we need to have this one as well, but because of their proximity to each other and because of the plans that we might be considering for the Northwood site, I would like to get ahead of that conversation. Can someone answer what steps are next as far as moving forward with development on other parts of this site? You know, the community and the arts. I mean, I see ideas here, you know, the retail and hospitality, the housing, but I don't, I'm not sure I understand what steps we're going to be taking to make decisions about each section of the site.
Mr. Mayor, I'll get Devin to help me with this. And so where we find ourselves is we're very much in a sequential process. So all of that happens post, you know, completion of the headquarters, moving out of the existing, even to your point of what does the city do with the existing station? And so I think we're coming into that period where there'll be some overlap. We'll be building the station. We'll be anticipating the completion date, move-in date. It unlocks the ability to then start moving forward with those out parcels. Devin, do you have a natural feel for when those discussions need to happen? So there's enough lead time for everybody to participate, get direction, but not overlap with the actual construction process at the police department?
Yeah, what I would say is, Commissioner, on this is, what we've looked at is we've gotten the ideas from the community to be able to know that we're going to have future development within that area, what that development looks like. We don't know exactly what's going to go on each one of those. And kind of like the city manager said earlier, it's more of a plat system right now, but what you saw was a visual of things that we've heard from the community that could go there. I think now we're starting to know really what the police station looks like, and we have our infrastructure for the police station, hence the new stormwater pond that we didn't know we were going to have to do because Northwest Florida Water Management District. Now we have that pond in place, so that's something that we lost a little bit of the original land that was there. So now we can really start kind of gearing in on what the rest of that could look like or what potential it would be. And I think this is the time that we start having those conversations moving forward.
So, Mr. City Manager, can you clarify for me? Is it, we won't be able to have those conversations until the police station is complete?
No, no, ma'am. That's not what I indicate. It is, we can't move forward until we're complete in terms of action on those sites. And so I believe you'll have overlap. You'll be building the police station, and as it's taking shape, as Devin's indicated, you have a lot of known at that point. You got your roads in place, any kind of uncertainties in use of land is in place. And then so it provides you all of next calendar year, of course, to have discussions about what do we want to do on those out parcels? How do you proceed? If you wanted to sell them, it'd be very premature to try to market them. If you wanted to partner with other people, and so I think probably next year generally, even later in this year, you certainly are well poised to have enough head start to kind of put some framework on it, but not be too far ahead. Obviously, we want to be careful on getting too far ahead. You don't want to encumber the ability to build the police station. So I think we're moving into that time period where we have a really good idea of what the public said they would like to see there. The details, not yet known. The disposition of those properties, not yet known and decided, but I think you have many, many months now to have those conversations.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. I would like to make a few motions, one being that we accept the staff update on the Northwood site and the police department headquarters' construction project.
Okay, there's a motion on the table for staff recommendation made by Commissioner Porter.
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Pro Tim. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passing unanimously 5-0. All right, the item is over. Back to Commissioner Porter for a few extra motions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to make the motion that this come back to us, just an additional update either at our May or June meeting when we've reached 90%, when we expect to reach 90% completion for the design.
Yeah. Yeah, Commissioner Porter, we don't need a motion. That is already in the works. It will come back to us.
Okay. Thank you. And then my last motion I'd like to make, I would like the direction to be, at this point, the assumption that we keep the site under public ownership. I know those conversations will continue to happen, but that is where I stand, and I'd like to put that on the table as a discussion, that that be the operating assumption as we move forward.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the table made by Commissioner Porter that we keep the rest of the site under the assumption that it will be public land for public function, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. I will not be supporting the motion on the table. I'll tell you why. One of the prime priorities of this commission is housing. Quite frankly, I would like to see more housing. That would be done in a public-private partnership and not necessarily with us retaining ownership, and I don't want to box us in. I hear what you're saying, and I don't necessarily disagree with the philosophy of what I think you would like to see there, but at this point, I'm not in a position where I would like to box this commission in, so I will respectfully not. like to box this commission in, so I will respectfully not support the motion on the table. Commissioner Williams Cox.
And I wanted to just chime in and say that I don't want to make a decision based on just what I know now, where if something comes along later on that will help us generate revenue, that will help offset some of these costs, then I don't want to have taken it off the table where we are now, you know, we're boxed in. I do believe that every effort to keep it publicly owned should happen, but if, for some reason, we're needing to do something a little different to offset costs or to do, because it's a 100-year building, I'm being told, if we need to do something else along that line, I want to make sure that we leave ourselves open and flexible enough to do something else if we needed to do that and not box us in for the next however many years. That's where I am. I agree, we want to keep it publicly owned and for as long as we possibly can.
Yeah, motion on the table right now is by Commissioner Porter, just to restate, to keep the land publicly owned within the proposed Old Northwood site as acquired, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. I got the mayor pro tem and then we'll come back to you, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would bring to everybody's attention the fact that, you know, as you all know, I serve on the board of the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium. And one of the things that we have been working on is a housing development on that site. That's why, part of the reason that the retention pond hadn't be widened and there has been a rendering, we're looking at, I think we discussed at our last board meeting, an 80-unit low-to-moderate-income housing development. And that, keeping the land under public control could very well cause us not to be able to do that development.
Commissioner Porter, wrap it up and then we'll take the vote on your motion.
Thank you. To be clear, the motion is just that the assumption be that we keep it public rather than sell it for pieces. I understand and of course would agree that we always reserve the opportunity to do something else and keep those opportunities available to us. In addition, and I'll just say and wrap it up, there are plenty of public-private housing projects where the public retains the ownership of the land and which is what makes it oftentimes affordable. So, I certainly don't want anyone to think that this is in any way antithetical to affordable or low-income housing or any kind of development like that. We would always reserve the right to make a change.
Sorry, Commissioner Porter. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I support the motion on the assumption. I support the Tallahassee Lands Consortium doing a project there as well. I think when we talk about assumptions, what I don't want to see is what we've seen in the past where we get one week's notice and public land is being sold off for a hotel like we saw on Gaines Street or like what we saw downtown, and we still haven't seen any development there. So, when we say the assumption is the, we assume as a government that we're not interested in unsolicited offers right now until we actually get into the planning process and decide how we want the land to be used. So, that's my nature, understanding of the motion and why I support it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And the motion fails two to three with the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and Commissioner Williams Cox in dissent. We are now on item 12.02. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, this item seeks the commission's approval for $175,000 for the Tallahassee Housing Authority to prepare a master plan for the redevelopment of the Springfield Apartments. As we know, the Tallahassee Housing Authority is the official entity designated by the federal government and Florida statute with providing public housing and rental assistance for eligible households in Leon County. Through the statutory capacity with funding directly from HUD, THA Construction manages public housing properties as well as provides Section 8 rental assistance. Funding requests from the housing authorities to other local governments like the city of Tallahassee are not typical because they're separate quasi-judicial entities, quasi-governmental entities, excuse me. However, this request follows in the path of the collaborative approach by the city, the county, and the CRA that you're very well aware of for the Orange Avenue redevelopment, now known as Columbia Gardens, which leveraged funding across multiple funding sources such as HUD, Florida Housing Finance Corporation, Purpose Built, and others to bring about that project that's still being completed and is a wonderful project. The objective for the Springfield redevelopment is very consistent and aligns with the city's strategic priorities to preserve and increase affordable housing in our community through partnerships. Staff recommends that we follow a similar model through the Orange Avenue redevelopment and share equally the initial $350,000 request with Leon County, assuming they would be willing to do that. Brenda Williams, the executive director of the housing authorities here, and Kimball Thomas can answer questions from the city staff.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Cook?
Yes, Mayor, we have two speakers on the item.
Okay. You want to hear from the public first or the presentation first? Presentation, please.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you. City Manager Goad, and again, this item is the ask of the Tallahassee Housing Authority. Just want to make sure there's a delinquion and understanding between the housing authority, what they do. The Tallahassee Housing Authority is over 3,000 public housing agencies across the nation. Their job is very distinct from what we do. They are the number-one leader in dealing with public housing in these municipalities. Certainly, there's very few who does the job that Brenda Williams and her staff does. Here's just a few overview things for the Tallahassee Housing Authority. All housing authorities were established, funded, and regulated by HUD, that's their governance, as independent quasi-governmental entities. They operate all public housing in Section 8 vouchers here in Leon County. And property redevelopment follows a HUD review. This process also includes master planning, which is a part of the conversation today, community engagement, and financial feasibility. Quick view of the Springfield Apartments on 1700 Joe Lewis Street that were built in 1972. There's 196 units. They're in the Griffin Heights community and part of the Griffin Heights neighborhood first plan. And they're in our neighborhood revitalization strategy area, also known as our NERSO, which also is make them acceptable for our CDVG funding. And at this time, staff would like you to consider option one. Brenda Williams is here, the executive director as well, and other staff, Gene Amerson, my housing manager, to answer any questions that you may have.
Excellent. All right, let's get the public comment. Oh, Brenda, do you have a presentation as well or you just here for a question? Okay. Yeah, let's get the public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. First speaker is Bernard Stevens. Bernard Stevens followed by Stanley Sims.
Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Yep, my name is Reverend Bernard Michael Stevens, Jr., and my address is Ex-Ex-M. You know, it's funny, who the Lord help me today, every time election comes around, you want to come out of the hat with all these great plans. Huh? Yeah. 1972, Joe Lewis apartment's been looking the same. Basin Street been looking the same. Huh? You want to talk about the South Side, Hollyfield, Magnolia Terrace, Holden Street? Huh? Darrell Jones also sits on the school board. All of y'all ain't nothing but slave drivers. Know how I know? Because at the end of the day, there's no reason why if, 1972, I was born in 88, I'm 35 years old. So, if all of these apartments that carries all of your crime, all of your drugs, you mean to tell me the only thing that you could do at the end of the day is give somebody $175,000 for a plant? A plant of what exactly? Because you say your crime continues to increase, but where do they increase at, huh? On the black side of town. So, you say you don't have shootings out there in Brathwaiveville. You don't have shootings out there in Kellarn, do you? No, but it seems to be on our sides of town where we suffer, where we got two people that's supposed to be speaking for us. But these families been over here going through generational curses for entirely too long. You got potholes all across this city, but this man get paid $275,000 a year. You're not taking care of our city. You're trying to line other people pockets with our money and then you increase our taxes, where we're already struggling, which causes the working man to work 10 times harder for his family. But you sit up here and you make decisions? We, as a people, are tired of struggling. We, as a people, have to do better. And you cannot do that by continue to keep this eight. And if you look at it eight, when you draw it, it continues to go in a circle. The only way for you to get to nine is to go up from eight. But yet instead, we continue to draw this circle. So, you are basically expecting the crime to happen, because as I look through the records and as I go back and look at the crime rate, it all happens on the same side of town. That mean you're failing at school, you're failing here in the legislature, and you're failing here, right here, right here in the church, so you say. I'm tired of hurting, I'm tired of my people hurting, and I'm tired of your police going over there arresting them. We are tired of being slaves into the prison system because he seem to think that's the best solution. You seem to think that's the best solution. Next thing I know, we're going to be up here talking about in the end of November, we need 25 more police officers. The crime is going up. Then every time, these people got to get hit in their pockets. Then you got businesses making millions, but the working-class person suffers. And y'all sit up here and can't get an understanding for the people who go out there and put out fires. We overpay folks. We talk about the state of the art facility, for what? It's not the building that makes the person, it was in the mindset. And if you cannot understand that, why do we go to church? With all that getting, you get understanding. And you cannot get understanding until you're willing to listen. And you ain't willing to listen because these people continue to have potholes all across the street. Who responsible for them? Reese Gold, well, he need to be fired. This man say over there on Holden Street, oh, well, they're number 75 over there on Fresh Town. You talking about number 75 before they fix the potholes? They already got a fix on the car, they got to put gas in their car, they got to change the oil, they got to pay taxes. You ain't giving them no break because you don't know how to manage money.
You have 30 seconds.
I'm not crazy, but I do understand due process. I do understand democracy. And if you hired an attorney to cover up your wrongdoing, then so be it. I know where the power at, and it's over there in the courthouse. That's where all the good power at. And what y'all gonna have to understand, if he been elected, almost 22 years serving in public service, and the same thing continue to go on, that mean we got the wrong leader. We got the wrong leadership, Tallahassee. And I advise you, if you want to do anything to save your city, don't vote this man back in the seat, because slavery gonna still continue. Your crime is gonna increase.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, just give me five seconds, but then you let the lady speak earlier.
Your time is up, please sit down. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Stanley Sims.
You name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My wife hadn't text me, so I think I'm still at 1320 Avondale Way. City Commissioner Curtis Richardson. Back along 1972 and don't hold me to that, but my mom was working at Montgomery Wards that's torn down now. Waitressing at the Savoy Club back in the day. You, Bobby Colson, his late former wife, Josie Colson, helped my mother transition from Havana, Florida. Our apartment, Brenda, was F-19, Texas. I know, but that's the area. Yeah, that's the area. My point is, I'm not going on what somebody told me, I'm going on what I actually lived. Now, we look at the new project now and we have all the Escalade, but she knows it didn't start off beautiful. There were many mountains and hard hills to climb. I called her constantly because people were asking me, was this true or was that true? And Brenda is the, and then that's no disrespect, that's out of relationship. Ms. Williams has the right deposition and the right decor for these type situations. Lot of things were slung at her, but guess what? She never slung back. She would call me sometimes and say, well, Stanley, how can you help me to understand that anyone that wants to come back can come back? We're mandated by law to help them to come back. My time is for learning, so this Springfield apartment, I'm excited about it because she has proven the test of time. And Mr. Mayor and City Commissioner Curtis Richardson, here's what's not resonating to you all that I had to tell her today that has resonated on the South Side.
30 seconds.
Where you just see it as a beautiful bit. Those people are so excited, they telling folks that, what's the name of that thing that they got in the kitchen? They ain't got countertops no more, they got islands. She gave them respectable service and they are excited to get it on the other end of the town. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
No additional speakers on this item.
All right. Recommended action is option number one, the approval of $175,000.
Move option number one is recommended by staff, Mr. Mayor.
Been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Commissioner Williams Cox, you recognized.
Just a point of clarification for those who are listening, it's going to cost more than $175,000 to do this. This is a part of our process that we're doing, we were asked by the very capable and able executive director and her team to do this as a step to the process, just as we've done in previous ones. So, for those who are listening, just want you to know, we know it's going to take more than $175,000. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, seeing no further comment. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Williams, could I ask you a quick question? Thank you. Just for clarification, could you briefly explain the relationship between the housing authority and HUD as far as funding you receive for maintenance for these properties?
Yeah, we receive capital fund improvement funding that is used for maintenance of all of our properties. And that's separate and apart from the operating subsidy that we receive from HUD.
Thank you. And part of the reason I bring that up is this is something unfortunately that's just plaguing housing authorities all over the country, that just the disinvestment at the federal level is, has contributed to the properties not being maintained at the level that they should have been. And sometimes they're just aging properties and no level of maintenance would have made a difference. But I know that that's something that has been a struggle, there's only so much money that you are getting to maintain these properties from the federal government.
Actually, the housing authority receives today less capital fund funding than we received when Orange Avenue Apartments were there. When the Orange Avenue Apartments went away, our capital fund, capital fund improvement money dwindled. So, that's why we came to the city and the county and asked, you know, will you help us, you know, pay for this master plan over at Springfield? And yes, the apartments, they're 50 years old, they're obsolete, and I receive calls on a regular basis, especially since Orange Avenue has come up out of the ground, they want to know, what about us? You know, because they're not living, their living conditions are not good. The buildings are made out of concrete cinder blocks, the air conditioning doesn't go to the second floor, so they're hot in the summertime. There's no ventilation because when the apartments were built 50 years ago, there's no ventilation in the apartments at all. So, we constantly deal with mildew and mold. All of the systems are deteriorated, the electrical, the plumbing, the HVC, the underground water pipes, everything is just deteriorated to the point where, you know, it really, we really need to do something.
Thank you.
Right. Ms. Williams, real quick, on the record though, we are very proud to partner with you with Orange Avenue, but are you a department of the city of Tallahassee?
No, we are not.
Are you a separate authority?
We are a separate authority.
And we need to continue to work hard together to address these issues. Absolutely. Motion on the table, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. It is 5:30, we're going to stand in recess, we will come back and take 12.03 right up after the one item on the public hearing before we get done to gen and speakers. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the public hearing to order at the 6:03 in the evening. We have one item on the public hearing, 14.01. That is correct, right? 14.02. 14.02, 14.03 have been removed. One item, 14.01. Ms. Tomans, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 14.01 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 24-0-16, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section 1-2 definitions and rules of construction and chapter 7 sign code of the Tallahassee Land Development Code, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 24-0-16.
All right, Ms. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no comment on this item.
Move, uh, option number one is recommended by staff.
Option number one's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Is there any public comment? I mean, colleagues. See none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Do we have any other items on the public hearing agenda this evening?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, before we go back to 12.03, Commissioner Williams Cox, you recognized for a special recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome a good friend of mine to chambers, Mr. Stanley Campbell, a former, uh, fellow rattler. He'll be here in our city. And, uh, what's, what's special about Mr. Campbell is that he is a Navy, a former Navy pilot, and owns about three golf courses, is that, is that right? Three, three? Or a few, just a few? And, and, and his, his wife is a part of the Biden administration, so we, we thank you for coming by to greet us. Mr. Mayor, if you could just say a few words?
Uh, sure. Welcome, I know you visiting from out of town.
Well, first of all, thank you all for, for, um, for recognizing me. I, I can tell you, running for the United States Senate gets you about 500 miles a day on the road. We, um, we have a very great state, and this is the heart of the state. I'm here tonight with the Criminal Baptist Convention, and I'll be here over and over and over again. So thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Richardson, thank you, Ms. Cox for introducing me, and I hate to run out, but I'm supposed to be speaking at 6:30 over there. So thank you all.
Yeah, you're in town for the convention, tell everybody what said hi, sir.
I, I am here, and by the way, I'm from Miami as well.
Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right, all right.
Great to see you.
Thank you, safe travels.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, sure. So we are back on unfinished business in the policy formation direction, we are on item number 12.03, and let me go ahead and turn it over to the Inspector General.
Thank you. Before you, as I did, agenda item 12.03, which asks for your consideration of the Charter Review Committee's recommendation to designate the Ethics Board as an appropriate local official for receipt of whistleblower complaints involving the commission offices, the Inspector General, or their staff, if alleged violations stated in the complaint is within the jurisdiction of the Ethics Board to investigate. This agenda item also asks for your consideration of a proposal that could supplement or be an alternative to the recommendation from the Charter Review Committee by the Inspector General's office. I'm not sure if you want to take public comments, or if you'd like me to keep going.
I got it, keep going.
Thank you, sir. Just very quickly to summarize what the, uh, well, I'll tell you what, let me, let me, that's like, officer, make his comments first, and then I'll follow that.
Good evening. Yes, good evening. I will try to keep this somewhat short. I know it's been a long day, it's been a long day for me, and I've almost been deflated sitting here. But I think this is an important issue, and as you know, I'm here on behalf of Tallahassee Independent Ethics Board to recommend, uh, or support the Charter's recommendation, uh, that the Ethics Board be designated as appropriate, appropriate local official for receipt of whistleblower complaints involving members of the City Commission, Inspector General, or their staff, only when the allegations already fall within the jurisdiction of the Ethics Board. Currently, the Inspector General is not permitted to designate whistleblowers when the subject of a complaint is a member of the City Commission or their staff, or a member of the Inspector General's office. We ask that you allow the voters to decide whether to fill this gap in accountability. Ability to designate whistleblowers would not expand our authority, or the authority of the Ethics Board, as we are already accepting these complaints. This change is only to protect those who wish to come forward without putting their jobs at risk, if they qualify. An affirmative vote today will not make this change happen, it simply allows the people to decide through the democratic process whether they want to fill this gap in accountability. A vote yes on this recommendations gives a voice to the people of Tallahassee. A no vote excludes them from this process. We are a democratic society of the people, by the people, and for the people. The democratic process is vital to us as citizens and as a community. Now, I would have to say, all over the country, with our state government, everywhere you turn, that seems to have been forgotten. We thrive as a nation through checks and balances and other things we put in place, such as Ethics Board and whistleblower protections, to have a process that we can trust, rather than a system that relies wholly on the goodness of those who serve. Our founding fathers recognized that a government that relies on the consent of the government derives its power from the people. Therefore, we humbly ask that you allow the people to be heard on this important issue. The ultimate goal is to protect the whistleblower against retaliation and retribution when a good faith complaint is brought forward. We've heard that the process is complex because it involves maintaining confidentiality and abiding by strict deadlines. The Ethics Board can follow such procedures as we already do with ethics complaints. We have the ability, know-how, and staff to properly execute the whistleblower complaint process without question, so we don't submit this with any bit of nati-ty. We've heard concerns about confusion. The genuine concern is about our commitment to serving those in need of our protection and ensuring the integrity of our local government. The Ethics Officer, Office and the Inspector General's Office currently both have a hotline and receive similar complaints. We handle that professionally and without compromising our missions. We need only maintain that commitment. Finally, we can list a lot of reasons for not filling this gap, or we can work together to problem solve and make the best available decision in the, in the interest of all those we serve. We've been trying for two years to get to this point, and I'm happy that we are here. The Board is here to work with the Commission to problem solve. You are being presented today with two valid options. The second is only viable if the Inspector General is genuinely independent. Second option may, but section option, well, don't worry, we have discussed this, and we are simply asking for a decision. I won't say we'll go away, because you'll probably see us in a month or two with something that I think that you'll be interested in, that'll, so our intent, and I'm mentioning that because our intent is always good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sutton, your comments, please?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to quickly summarize what's being proposed by the Office of Inspector General. The first thing I'd like to make clear is that the proposal from the Office of Inspector General is to move the Inspector General's office from ordinance into the charter, replacing the city, uh, city auditor with the Inspector General. And I'll, I'll be very brief, included with that is to add provisions for the removal of the Inspector General, add the terms and expectations when a Inspector General is hired. It would also define the purpose and scope of the authority of the Inspector General's office, establish a set funding source. It would also require the City Commission to set the standards with which the Office of the Inspector General would operate. Uh, the, the proposal from the Inspector General's office would fill the gap that's being proposed to be filled by the Ethics Board and the Charter Review Committee's proposal. Uh, it, it would also go beyond just the limits of that, though. It would, it would be, bring the full power of the Inspector General's office to fill that gap, rather than the narrow scope of authority of the Ethics Office. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, great. Let's get to public comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We have, uh, two speakers on this item. The first is Ernie Payne, the other is Will Crowley.
Your name and address for the record, please, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Ernie Payne, 2006 East Indian Head Drive, on behalf of the Citizens for Ethics Reform. We support the Charter Review Committee's recommendation, providing a limited extension of whistleblower authority to the Independent Ethics Board. But we would also support the Inspector General's proposed alternative, although with one caveat. The purpose of my original proposal, which became the CRC's proposal, was to fill a documented gap in the city's whistleblower protection. Most important goal here is to improve accountability and trust in city government by filling that gap, regardless of which office does so, as long as it has the necessary independence. Although I can't speak for the Ethics Board, I believe they share that goal. Inspector General has proposed an alternative charter amendment with the intent of making his office more independent, and so able to pursue any whistleblower complaints against the City Commission he might receive. This alternative is a step in the right direction. However, any move toward independence for the Inspector General will have no meaning if he continues to rely on the city's legal staff or legal counsel. According to the Best Practices for Inspectors General, as published by the Association of Inspectors General, quote, "The OIG should have on staff or have access to legal counsel to advise the OIG, independent of the agency or jurisdiction subject to the OIG's oversight." In other words, legal counsel for the Inspector General should not be a city employee, but should be under a contract executed solely by the Inspector General, with neither the city attorney nor the city manager having any oversight of that contract. Without this provision, a situation could arise in the future, for instance, where an employee files a whistleblower complaint against the city based on wrongful termination in retaliation for reporting inappropriate conduct. The Inspector General, with no other option, would have to seek advice from the city attorney, whose job is to protect the city, as to whether the case against the city should proceed. There's a clear conflict of interest. However, there is a relatively simple remedy. Please consider adding an independent contracted attorney to the Office of Inspector General as part of the charter amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Will Crowley. Not seeing Will Crowley, then we have no other speakers.
Okay, let's open it up for discussion. You have three minutes. Your name and address for the record, please.
Name is Stanley Sims, 1320 Avondale Way. I won't need all of my three minutes, I do just want to echo Mr. Prime's example. I file multiple complaints with the inspector, HR, ethics, and I can validate having the city attorney as the attorney has given me great displeasure. And more so recently than our past, because it puts my wife at odds. My wife has felt at odds. I'm limited, I can't even speak to my former wife supervisor in a cordial way. So it does cause friction on both ends. I've had a city employee tell me that she didn't know if my wife was in the building or not. Imagine what anxiety that put me through. Knowing that I can't go to the police department because badge number 114 gave me, the police took away the authority of people saying, I want to talk to you, they dictate to me when I'm in this building, who I can talk to and who can't talk to me. And so I can't go to the city attorney where my wife works and file a complaint and actually feel it's being vetted, because she's at odds. She's got a mayor, a city manager, who don't even hide their disgust with me. I've got a city commissioner, Diane Cox, who does all kind of gestures, publicly showing her display with me. Now, that ain't made up, that's real. And I'm saying that so it will give validity to his complaint. Because then you got someone that is objective, out of the situation, doesn't have to worry about what the city manager or, or what the commission is gonna rate the, the city attorney on. Teresa doesn't have to worry about how she's gonna be rated, and people can feel free and not act like we're in Russia. Thank you, Mr. Payne, for eloquently showing my frustration.
Our next speaker, please. Your name and address for the record, please, you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Will Crowley, I'm a city Tallahassee resident. Please forgive me, we are on the ethics item, is that correct? Yeah. Thank you very much. I want to say just that I support, um, the ethics item as unanimously, I support the ethics item as unanimously approved by the CRC. But I did want to note an observation that I had about how the mayor described this vote. He described it as contentious, uniquely contentious, and therefore, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seemed like there was some suggestion that maybe because it's so contentious, it's somehow less legitimate than the other items that were approved by the body. And I just wanted to think about that for a second. What does it mean for this to be so contentious? As you pointed out, it was initially, um, I think, a threshold of one vote, and then the person, or one of the people who voted against it said, you know what, let's make this unanimous, let's all support it. I wouldn't consider that contentious, but let's use your definition. Would that mean that every item that has come before this City Commission that passed with a 3-2 vote, would that also be contentious? And if that's also contentious, does that also undermine the legitimacy of those decisions? I think it's a question worth asking. I don't think that we'll get an actual answer in discussion tonight. But I would like us to think about what, what does it mean to be contentious, what does it mean for things to be legitimate? But in general, I would like to see this ethics item pass. I also wanted to bring up another concern about consistency. The mayor said he did not want to address individual charter review items on a one-on-one basis, when ethics question has come up in the past. And yet, this Charter Review Committee, when we finally did a Charter Review, we said, we're gonna narrow you to four, four topics. That doesn't seem consistent to me. Now, when the body used their authority to discuss this item and eventually unanimously support it, um, it seems like this is being singled out as well. We don't want to do it as a, a full comprehensive Charter Review process, but we also don't want to do a one-off. And the only way I can kind of reconcile those two things is that the mayor just doesn't support this ethics proposal, not so much the procedure. So, um, support the ethics proposal, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Mayor, that is the last speaker that I have on the item.
Okay, excellent. Let's jump right in. I'll start it off. Mr. Carly, you are absolutely correct, I do not support this ethics proposal, and I'll be voting against it. I don't support the proposal that's brought forth. I don't support the proposal that's brought forth before by Mr. Sutton. The reason why is that this is a massive change to the job description after we have talked, and you do agree that it is a big change to take out the auditor general out of the charter and put in inspector general. And I think that the community should spend a lot more time than just last meeting and this meeting on that discussion, be able to move forward. I do not feel comfortable addressing that and making a final vote tonight. I also do not feel comfortable with the process. Mr. Crowley, you are correct. It was a one-vote difference. I have had members of that committee since reach out to me. There was confusion as well on it because there was not enough time spent on it, the last 15 minutes of the last meeting where the decision was made. And then, yes, it is not unreasonable at the end of such meetings for them to make a ceremonial motion to make it unanimous, to bring it before us. And so I don't think that undermines the process at all, but it is what it is. So I intend to support, to take no action and not send this to the ballot. If we would like to have a conversation about what to put in ordinance under the inspector general's office, I am very comfortable with that in the near future and look forward to hearing what the ethics officer brings forward with the inspector general. But tonight, I will not be supporting a motion in favor of either the inspector general's recommendation or, quite frankly, the CRC recommendation that came through in the final hours of the process. That's my position. We'll just see how it goes from here. So, should we... Commissioner Porter, I saw your hand first, so we'll start with you and just work our way down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question for now and for you, Madam City Attorney, and that is, does the inspector general have the ability to hire independent counsel? And if not, what would make that possible, if anything?
Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll just begin by saying that, by noting that the city's charter regarding the appointment of the city attorney is very specific in that the city attorney and the city attorney's office has sole responsibility for representing the municipality and all of its officers in legal matters. So I would just start there. I would also say that at the time that the inspector general position was created, this was discussed as well. It was a matter of consideration. The current ordinance for the inspector general says that unless outside counsel is otherwise authorized by the city commission, meaning the city commission could hire outside counsel for the inspector general or the city auditor, the city auditor may request that the city attorney retain outside counsel, where due to a conflict of interest as specified in the Florida bar rules of professional responsibility, for which I or whoever was in my position would be responsible for understanding, that there would be a legal conflict that would prevent representation. So it's my understanding that at the time that this was put in place with the city attorney's office, that Mr. Sutton agreed that that would protect his independence. You know, if we were starting from scratch, we might have done it differently, but he, I believe it's his position, I don't want to speak for him, but I believe it's his position that that does adequately, that kind of language adequately protects his independence in this circumstance.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. And so, for example, the example that Mr. Payne gave, that would not qualify as a conflict of interest, or would it?
I wouldn't want to ever sort of respond to a hypothetical, Commissioner, but I guess what I would tell you is that if anything was brought to my attention or anybody sitting in my seat, and it raised a potential conflict of interest under our rules of professional responsibility, I think this language would actually require that I hire outside counsel for the inspector general in that circumstance.
And what could be changed in ordinance? What, if anything, that's being recommended by the inspector general could, in fact, be changed by ordinance? My understanding is that nothing could be. What we're talking about right now, obviously, would be changes to the charter that would be updating the office of the inspector general's responsibilities. So my question is, I believe the mayor made mention to perhaps changing ordinance and not the charter as it relates to this position, and I'm asking whether anything that's being proposed could be adopted in ordinance rather than our charter.
I don't know if I can answer that, Commissioner, without having sort of... I'd have to better study what is being proposed. I don't know if Mr. Sutton might be able to answer that.
Mr. Sutton.
Thank you, sir. There are several items being proposed, are things that are already in the ordinance that are being brought forward to the charter. The additional items predominantly deal with the removal of the inspector general rather than being, serving at the will of the commission. It would add provisions that would have to be met to remove the inspector general. That's the most significant, would have to be in charter and could not be done in ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Matlow.
Thank you. And while you're here, Mr. Sutton, can... These recommendations that add these protections into the charter, why do you recommend them and why do you think they're necessary?
It would remove the possibility of the... Or it would make much more difficult for the inspector general to be removed for decisions or conclusions that the inspector general makes in relation to investigations into complaints. And I believe that this would provide the additional independence required to allow the inspector general to receive complaints related to the elected officials and their staff.
Okay, thank you. General comments, I can support both of the initiatives. I disagree with the mayor that this is in any way rushed. This was first suggested by the Independence Ethics Board over two years ago. If anything, this is the slowest-moving vote we've ever taken. I mean, we look at complaint amendments, we look at Walani, we look at finding out the price of a police station. Nothing moves this slowly. So the question before us today is, does it make sense to move forward with it? Right now, there's a very big gap in whistleblower protections. If you're a city employee and you have a complaint against somebody sitting at this dais, there's not an appropriate person for you to file a whistleblower complaint against. If you have a problem with the inspector general and the way he's doing his jobs, there's not an appropriate person to file a whistleblower complaint with. So the question is, this gap exists. We know it exists. We have an ethics board that was voted on by the citizens and established for this very reason, to provide protections and give citizens an outlet if they see unethical behavior, and they've identified a gap. We have an opportunity to close that gap today, and it's not pointing wrongdoing at anybody up here in the past or in the future, but it's giving the people who work for us the knowledge and the path to take a complaint if one arises in the future. So I do think that is necessary. On the inspector general, in the charter, it's the same type of issue to me. I mean, by a three-vote majority on this board, we could eliminate the inspector general if he started investigating something that may embarrass a commissioner, embarrass the city manager, embarrass any of us up here. He could be eliminated in three votes. So what we're saying today is, do we want this inspector general position in the hands of the people through our charter, through the structure of our city to say, "This is a value proposition that we want to have and protect the position against political interference"? And again, that's not an attack on any individual, past or future. It's, do we require that protection and will we be a better city for it? And I think, across the board, the answer is yes. We will be a better city by adopting both of these initiatives. So I could understand the argument about more time on the inspector general's position because it wasn't voted through the charter review commission as the other one was unanimously. And we can talk about whether votes got changed ceremoniously or not, but nobody was forced to change their vote. It came to a vote the first time and it passed. A majority passed it. I believe in democracy. I believe in the majority becomes the law of the land. And we do have a second backstop as a city commission to make our own decisions as well. But I know that was important for the charter review committee, not only to take up, because we didn't ask them to take it up, they decided to take it up and bring it to us by unanimous vote, so I support it. So I'll move that we... I'll move option one, ratify the CRC recommendation, as well as option two for the inspector general's to be added to the charter.
Second.
Motion's been made for our option number one and option number two, moving both forward to the ballot, made by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Porter. For comment, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I am just thoroughly confused because I did not see us leaving here with two options to take to the voters. I thought it was one or the other. Creating additional red tape is not what voters, I think, want. And Commissioner Matlow, something you just said, it needs to be corrected. A 3-2 vote tonight doesn't change it today. It goes to the voters. No matter what the vote is, it either goes to the voters or it doesn't. So I think we need to just be very clear when we're dealing with this, not to put misinformation out there, because we're not voting tonight for either. We're voting whether to send it to the ballot so that the voters will have the choice. I have a question for Mr. Sutton. I noticed that a few of the other local governments in Florida that you identified, they had an IG appointed by the reported... Appointed by and reporting to committees other than the elected officials. Can you explain why you didn't include that in your proposal?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. That was a comment that I had heard previously from the Citizens for Ethics Reform when the inspector general's office was originally created. And when I looked at other municipalities that had, or other local governments that had inspector generals, there were three that really stood out that did have independent bodies appointing and the inspector general reporting to those. I didn't feel that was the best fit for the city of Tallahassee because those inspector general offices only do investigations. They do not have an audit function, and our audit function in our office is very strong. And I feel if the inspector general is removed and put out into a completely separate function like that, the effectiveness and power and the benefits of the audit function would be drastically reduced. And so I didn't think it was the best fit for the Tallahassee to move in that direction, that the audit function is really that valuable. For example, the city manager several times has talked about how the value of the audit to his managing of the city, the independent review of operations and recommendations is an extra set of eyes to his, to help him with his job.
Well, on point, then. Why are you recommending pulling... If you say that the city auditor position and the responsibility is so strong, why are you recommending taking that out of the charter? Why not recommend adding into the charter the inspector general instead of switching the two? I am confused as well.
The inspector general function in general has two divisions, an audit division and an investigation division. Right now, the investigative division is only provided for by ordinance. The audit division is provided for by charter.
Understood.
So this is an opportunity to bring the two and meet best practices and into one office under one official instead of myself serving two roles at one time, both city auditor and inspector general, which is frankly unique anywhere that I know of.
Exactly. Back on point.
Okay. My other question is, I hear, I'm hearing a lot about whistleblower. Is that really what this is all about, just whistleblower, closing that gap?
The proposal from the inspector general's office, it goes beyond just whistleblower. It expands the authority of the inspector general. It brings, not expands, but it brings the full power of the inspector general's office to the issue or to the gap that the ethics board is trying to fill. Their gap is specifically focused on the code of ethics and how it overlaps with the whistleblower statute, which frankly is very narrow. But the inspector general's office authority with whistleblower is much broader, encompasses all aspects of the whistleblower statute, not just misfeasance and malfeasance.
But quite honestly, that's not what we asked you to bring back. What we asked at the last minute to bring back was announcements on whistleblower protection and in particular with the new law that was just passed and signed by the governor that will come into effect, how does it all work? And now what you have brought back is a wholesale change of the inspector general's office and the auditor's office, and quite frankly, there is confusion about it because this is a very, very big, very important position. Commissioner, you still have the floor.
Okay. Madam Attorney, you indicated, because I heard what Mr. Payne said about having independent legal, but I know it has been past practice that outside legal assistance has been brought in, hired by your office.
Yes.
Do you see an issue with that in this situation?
No, I do not. I think, as I said, I think the language that was adopted by this commission by ordinance addressing that issue when the inspector general was put into place is adequate to protect the independence of the inspector general in these circumstances. And I would expect we would either leave that in ordinance or put it into the charter so that we, it would be clear that that was the case. And what that would mean is that if there's a conflict, that outside counsel would be hired for the inspector general.
So my position is this, that we put it to the voters, and if the voters decide not to, then we fall back to the ordinance. So...
Yes, ma'am. That would be the case now if this is not brought forward.
Okay. So with that in mind, I'll make the substitute motion that we go with option number two.
Second.
A substitute motion for option number two that was made by Commissioner Williams-Cox. That was seconded by the mayor pro tem. You got the mayor pro tem.
And so I just want to be clear that the issue that Mr. Payne raised about the outside counsel, that is covered in this motion.
It would be covered in whatever, either by ordinance or by charter.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, it's currently in the ordinance, and so it just would depend on how we draft the actual amendment for the inspector general if this option number two goes forward, whether we would include that language in the charter itself or it would just remain in the ordinance as part of this process, an acknowledgement of the process.
All right. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, then we may be past that point, but since the inspector general did indicate the value of the audit function, I would like to underscore that. It would give me some concern if there was a rebalancing of investigative versus audit.
Right.
Obviously, these things happen today, and they're under Mr. Sutton's command. The audit function is extraordinarily valuable to an organization our size and as complex as we are. He and Mr. Sutton's been an auditor in all capacities in that office, and they know it's very difficult. They come in, they peel apart the operations, they give us constructive feedback. So I'm not sure if that changes with this. I understand the two divisions, but I would, for what it's worth, I think we need to make sure, my recommendation that the audit function is preserved, is intact, and it doesn't lose its full force and ability that has existed in the past.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I was rereading the proposed language, and section 33 continues to say the office of the inspector general is to conduct audits, investigations, so that would continue, Mr. Sutton.
Yes, sir. This does not provide for any changes in the, what the inspector general's office does today. It clarifies the governing ordinances, languages, and charter to clarify that and increase the independence of the inspector general's office.
Thank you. I'm going to support the motion on the table, but I'd like an opportunity for a motion after this one, yes.
Commissioner Porter, you had your hand up.
My question was resolved. Thank you.
All right. Bringing in for a landing, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I just wanted to say this one final thing. I remember when we gave the direction or the authority to move forward with creating the inspector general's office, and at that time, we did not see the charter review in sight. And so we did what we could do at that point in time to make sure that the office became an office of inspector general. And so here we are with the opportunity to now do what we probably should have done when we did that, but because the charter wasn't open for review, here's an opportunity to try to make that happen now. So I'm in favor, of course, I made the motion, so I'm in favor of moving forward with the option.
Okay, there's motion on the table that was made by Commissioner Williams-Cox for option number two, seconded by the mayor pro tem. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. Passes 4-1 with the mayor in dissent. Okay, that is our last item of business to come before us, policy formation and direction.
Follow-up on that, I'd like to make a motion that we also ratify the CRC recommendation... Follow up on that. I'd like to make a motion that we also ratify the CRC recommendation to bring that forward to the voters as well.
Well, that was the original motion in that, there was a
They were combined in the original. So this would be a se, a second motion to take up one independently.
It was combined, but I made a, I made a substitute motion to, to, to uncouple them and make it just option two.
Correct.
That was my intent.
Yeah.
Correct.
I can make it a sharing of ideas if you prefer.
If you, I tell you what, Commissioner Porter, are you willing to second Commissioner Matlow's motion?
Yes.
All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails, three to two, with Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, mayor pro tem, and the mayor in opposition. Okay, we are now on unadmitted speakers. Mr. Cook, how many unadmitted speakers do we have this evening?
We have six or seven.
Okay, excellent.
Ready?
Yep.
All right, our first speaker will be Thomas Spears, followed by David Wamsley. Just a reminder for speakers, three minutes per speaker. The light in front of the mayor will start green and then ultimately turn yellow and red. I'll give you a heads up at 30 seconds.
My name is Thomas Spears. My address is exempt.
Okay.
Homeless people need homes, and I'll give credit to this commission for working for some more affordable housing, although the definition of affordable is always an issue in itself. People who are suffering with drug addiction need care, whether that's mental health care or rehabilitation or whatever else. People suffering from a short-term mental health crisis need care from licensed and trained professionals. None of these situations, on top of dozens of others, are improved by a gun or a badge. Overpolicing does not solve any issue, let alone these issues. The agenda item for the Northwood site states TPD has grown considerably in terms of the number of officers and employees, as well as the variety of services, services it offers to, to meet the evolving needs of the community. And that last half of the sentence reveals the core issue with policing, not just in Tallahassee, but around the country. Police should not be doing those things. Other agencies and other professionals should be doing those things, and they should be getting the money, the requisite money to allow them to do them, to do those things. Building the CPD headquarters with this massively bloated budget solves nothing. As Commissioner Proctor said to, said to you all in his, in his letter, the citizens of Tallahassee will take the brunt of the cost, which at this point is, with only 60% of the design finish, is already doubled. There, the, there needs to be new rounds of public hearings so that the entire city has more chances to weigh in. There are better options than this. Why are there so many plans for their, these third space style accommodations in this area? No one is going into, even around a police department, but let alone into a police department to hang out or to hold concerts or whatever they're trying to do in these, these halls. On top of that, we also need a review by the CPRB before it gets disbanded of the arrest of Calvin Riley. How does a three-year officer not know to not open a sealed bottle of liquor? These are the real problems that really need to be solved if we're going to make policing any better. Finally, on a different subject, there have been massive protests around the country, particularly at Columbia University in New York City, but plenty of other universities also, standing against the genocide that has been inflicted on the Gaza Strip. While these protests have been going during this past week, there have been multiple mass graves uncovered in Palestine, especially around the Nassar Hospital. Hundreds of Palestinian men, women, and children have been found handcuffed, their hands behind their back, executed, and thrown into mass graves. Israel's committing a genocide. We have been coming to you for months to stand against this genocide, to divest from Israel, to condemn Israel, to never work with the Iowa again, and to support the Palestinian community in Tallahassee and in Florida. Please do so. Please be on the right side of history. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Next is David Wamsley, and then Bernard Stevens.
Mr. Wamsley, name and address for the record, please.
Dave Wamsley, running for city commission. I live at 850 South Gatsin Street Unit to be undisclosed. Am I able to ask questions?
Now, this is your time, actually.
It's just mine?
Yeah.
I can just, three minutes of talking.
Yes, sir.
At the microphone.
If you would, sir, speak to the microphone. That way the broadcast can pick up all the remarks.
This is a publication called Tallahassee Reports. I'm usually just read the Democrat and watch the news and read the New York Times, not little blogs written by small people. But I think this is fairly legitimate, this publication. I don't know, but, oh, says the blogger. But it says Commissioners Matlow, Porter, continue to attack the TPD. Wow. There's three or 400 police officers in this town, plus the sheriff's department, plus FSU police. I think they primarily try to do a pretty good job and protect us. I just don't understand why they're being harassed by a sitting commissioner and his sidekick. So, yeah. So anyway, there's three things I want to talk about tonight. One is, and I can't ask questions, but it has to do with the Amazon regional facility. My understanding is there were something like 1,400 jobs created. There were hundreds of millions of dollars of economic impact, and our young commissioners, inexperienced commissioners, who've never met Jeff Bezos, know just how unsmart that is to speak against those jobs. I would think we'd want to encourage them to bring more jobs, to have more facilities to put people to work instead of wasting time on the commission. But we'll put the four-one vote aside, Jack. I think you were the one because Matlow pulled out at the last minute, like he does, like a coward does. But anyway, I think you voted against it. Number two is Blueprint, is it? Well, you can't answer a question. My understanding is one of the commissioners has sued Blueprint, which is the county and the city, I think. Is that right? They've sued Blueprint.
Here are 30 seconds remaining.
Yeah, so I have asked my legal counsel to work with me to file an amicus brief that will expose this frivolous lawsuit. And more importantly, we're going to communicate how much money we're wasting to win what is already won because of your lawsuit. My guess is about a quarter million dollars, which could have built some affordable housing, which I used to do. You don't understand.
Your time's expired.
So I just, one last thing, which is
Thank you very much. Your time has expired.
Sorry.
Appreciate it.
Is that you're going to resign.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Bernard Stevens, and then Harry Brown.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Reverend Bernard Michael Stevens, Jr., and my address is exempt. You know, people, this is a paperclip. This is a paperclip. This paperclip has more power than anything. Why? Because this paperclip, it bends and it holds documents. And see, the problem is with our elected officials, you bend and you hold documents. But you don't know how to hold people together. You think you have an answer for it, but you don't. You three continue to be on the same page for what reason? You all do not show what democracy truly is when you know that the issue at hand is already evident. You already know that. Then we got people going back and forth looking at wrong reports. But let's talk about the issues that the city has right now. Let's talk about that. Let's talk about you wanting more money. Let's talk about that. Let's talk about the gold, the, the work that Reese Gold does. Let's talk about that. Let's talk about how your city employees continue to hurt. Let's talk about that. The main poke, the, the main focus that y'all focus on is policing. Policing what? How much longer are you going to let the city catch on fire? People, y'all got a choice to make come August 20th, and I advise you, diversity starts in the mindset, not people who seems to be so educated and so high and mighty to the point where they understand people. Because God gave us the gift of a word, and that word can be manipulated at any given time. And somebody may not read through that because you can't comprehend it. We're computers. We're just human, and we're taught. We get sick. We do all of that. But when is it that we're going to understand that the city of Tallahassee continues to hurt? 200 years, and you mean to tell me that we still got crime on the south side of town? We still got projects over here? You could have knocked that stuff down, told them, people, no, we ain't doing that no more. You go over there to Gwinnett County in Georgia, they don't have them problems. But then you want to advertise them on your police department, talking about, oh, we're about to catch up with your pay. Well, imagine how many residents they have. Imagine how big their county, their, their county is. But we always want to compare ourselves to somebody else. Can we start being different for a change? Can we focus on what we got going on? Instead of what y'all trying to say, well, this what they do over here, this what they do over here. We are different. We ain't the same. We're different. Realize that. The color of your skin should not dictate who you are. Just because you're white don't make you different from me, John Daly. Doesn't. No. But see, the people seem to think out there at the end of the day that because the white person has more power, or the white person got more privilege, that the black people are people of oppression. Yeah, we still oppressed, but how much longer we going to be oppressed when we got leaders who continue to suppress information vital to the integrity of democracy? Where does that begin? In a form of a thought. And thought remains things. And if you got a city attorney who going to cover up wrongdoing, if you got a city manager who fired a HR director because she stand up to his intolerance, his, oh my God, this man is so inhumane, it makes no sense. And you co-sign with him. So democracy needs to be changed out. I don't care how you like it. And the next time I come here and wear a shirt that say politicians need to be changed, just like
Your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Harry Brown, and then Evelyn Johnson.
Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Harry Brown, 5431 Crump Road, Tallahassee. I'm here to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God. First, I'd like to ask you and the city attorney, if Anita Favors handled my termination right, when she took $31,000, which was my severance pay, and said that she had discretion and could do what she wanted to do to me. She, she should have given me that money at the same time that I was given my retirement and my other rightful funds. Lou Shelley, the city attorney at the time, stated that she was wrong and tried to take all of my money. He stated that she did not listen to her advisors and just did whatever she wanted to do. All the city leaders knew that I had been traumatized and was experiencing severe depression. You two think that because I signed the general agreement, that knocks me out of my right for my severance pay. You both know that I should have gotten that money at the time of my termination. Everyone knows that it is never too late to do the wrong, the right thing, because you all throw money around like grass seed. We all see the wrong that Reese Gold is allowed to do with no reproach. It is obvious on your leadership, you have no concern about doing the right thing. And I, I ask you to ask your spiritual leader if you were handling my situation in the proper manner, and you never responded. That shows that you need to get in a good Bible-based church and put God at the head of your life, and you will know to do the right thing. You are under a woman's spiritual leadership, and that is known that you are defying God's Word. You are truly showing your weakness. Andrew Gillum did not listen to my advice after I warned him, and you see what happened to him. You have two blacks sitting there beside you who seem to care less about following you to hell.
You're at 30 seconds.
You need to get it together, guy. You don't have it right. You need to do the right thing. Does this city do what they, did they do it to me because I was black or they just hated the heck out of me? That was my money, and it should be given to me. And you in a position now, you can do it because you still have time to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Evelyn Johnson, and then we'll hear from Casey Weiner.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Evelyn Johnson. I live at 1523 Mary, M-E-R-R-Y Oaks Court. I bought my house in 2016. I did not know that there was a flooding problem at my home. I found out over the last eight years that there's two holding ponds. There's one at the end of Golden Park, and there's one at the end of Fred Smith. That property is owned by the city of Tallahassee. I also found out that there is another parcel of land that was purchased by the Leon County, Leon County. That parcel of land is the runoff for the two holding ponds at Golden Park and Fred Smith. Those, that holding ditch is full of trees, debris, refrigerators, tires, whatever else. What happens when it rains, like we had last week or the week before, the wa, the holding ponds will fill up, it goes into the ditch, it goes down the hill and into my backyard and floods my house. It also floods five other houses on our street. We're a private street, so we don't get the holes fixed. We don't get anything, and nobody seems to care that we're getting flooded. I was told by the city of Tallahassee Maintenance Department that I should not have flooding in my backyard. My house was per, was built in the 80s. The part, the townhomes on Fred Smith and Golden Park were created in the middle 90s. With the two hotels that they've got on Monroe Street, those holding ponds are not big enough to hold all the water, so the water has to go somewhere. And me being downhill, it comes into my backyard. I have enough water coming in my backyard to do tubing down my backyard. My, my air conditioner, when I bought, when I bought the house, was on the ground. It was halfway underwater with the flooding that I have in my yard. It's now on stilts. My son put it on stilts for me. I just, I need somebody to help me. I just need the ditch to be cleaned out so that I don't get flooded. This is my forever home. This is the first home that I've ever bought, that I bought eight years ago. I want to live in my home. I don't want to have to move to live with my kids because I can't live in my home. I can't sell my home because I would have to disclose that it floods. I was not given that option. They did not tell me that there was flooding in the backyard. I had to find that out on my own. So I'm just asking if you could please just help me to clean out the ditch so I don't have flooding in my backyard. Because spending eight to 10 hours cleaning my house of an inch of water through the whole thing is like ridiculous.
You're at 30 seconds.
That's all I have to say. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Commander?
Ms. Johnson, we've got some folks here I'd like you to connect with. Can you remind me your street name?
Mary, M-E-R-R-Y Oaks Court.
Okay, and it sounds like there's some cross-governmental coordination that may be necessary. You indicated that some of the storm conveyances in the county?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and we can, we can help with that.
I can show you the picture where
We could certainly help, but, but there may be some coordination necessary. Steve Schaefer is our general manager of Underground Utilities. If you'll connect with him, we'll see if we can sort through this.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker.
Next speaker is Casey Weiner, and then Stanley Sims.
We are not going to have a conversation with people from the audience that are screaming. Now, this is how we are going to operate, and we will go into a recess so everybody can calm down, okay? We're going to be respectful and give everybody the opportunity to speak. Your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Casey Weiner. My address is exempt. On May 7, 2023, between the hours of 2:00 and 3:00 a.m., TPD framed Mr. Calvin Riley, Sr. Since then, nothing has been done to rectify this act of bigotry. Commissioners John Daly, Curtis Richardson, Diane Williams Cox are also directly responsible for this frame job by attacking civilian oversight of police in Tallahassee and limiting the civilian police review board's power in the city charter. From the failure of this commission to regulate police at all, to TPD's unchecked history of prejudicial, hateful behavior, to the white officer that framed Mr. Calvin Riley, Sr., to the white judge and all-white jury who wrongfully convicted him, to John Daly, quote, "standing by our jury and our police department," unquote, practically every component of this city's government upholds systemic racism and bears contempt for the rights and lives of the black citizens of Tallahassee. The CPRB must break this pattern and fulfill its duty to review Mr. Calvin Riley, Sr.'s case. The city of Tallahassee decided to reschedule the last CPRB meeting with no advance warning nor reason for the cancellation. The citizens' police review board is legally bound to continue to fulfill its obligations to the citizens of Tallahassee right up until HB 601 takes effect. Its own mandate states that it must Its own mandate states that it must meet once a quarter. We cannot allow the three problem commissioners to obstruct the CPRB any further. We demand the CPRB reconvene before July and follow their own mandate. TPD cannot receive any more funding increases on top of their already $10 million budget increase they received this fiscal year. Increasing funding for TPD with their abysmal reputation, gross racist misconduct and insistence on protecting their dirty officers is unconscionable and despicable. It also makes no fiscal sense, given the city is already at a $3.8 million deficit and refuses to pay our firefighters. We also don't fairly pay our teachers, who are sorely needed since this commission clearly can't count. Increasing the new TPD headquarters budget by 125%, equating to roughly $200 million all told, and giving yourselves a raise while increasing our property taxes by 8.5% and neglecting essential services like firefighters, mental health care and affordable housing demonstrates your allegiance to only yourselves and killer cops. And killer cops. The citizens of this city largely oppose these potential increases for TPD's headquarters budget and we demand a public hearing on these proposed increases. This support of anti-blackness extends beyond the borders of Tallahassee to U.S. imperialist action around the world. This commission and all U.S. governmental bodies have a responsibility to acknowledge and act to help stop the genocides across the African continent. Free Sudan, Congo, Antigrae. Free the Caribbean and free Haiti. Free Palestine. These nations will be free.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Stanley Sims.
How many more speakers do we have, Mr. Cook?
Um, Will Crowley, if he's still here, is the only other speaker we have.
Okay, name and address for the record, please.
Um, 1320 Avondale Way. Uh, I just got a text, um, in reference to flooding in the J. Gaither area and, uh, Ms. Jackson is really not pleased. Um, evidently, um, there was a meeting over in the Jack, um, J. Gaither area. I used to live on 1010 Civil Ridge, Commissioner Richardson. And I've, I've walked through that area, going the back way, walking to J. Gaither Park many a days. And the flooding in that area is not a new thing. And, um, from what Ms. Jackson has said, and I must confess, I haven't seen this with my own eyes, but she's saying that the debris and the stuff is same about what that lady there was going on over in the, um, J. Gaither area. They said that a commissioner came out there and was telling them all of what the city was doing, but she wasn't listening to what the needs of the people in that J. Gaither area is. So, Mr. Schaver, if you could, I'm just coming back in, but, Mr. City Manager, if you could direct Mr. Schaver or direct someone to go and reach out to the people in the J. Gaither area. We've, we've got some substantial amount of setting water in the area. Ms. Jackson says debris, debris, um, trash that has been left for a very long time. Um, Mr. Sims, they need to clean out that ditch that I used to jump. But those, and I'm sure that they are areas. And I don't want to just come up here and, and just say this because, um, Public Works does a very good job. I, I, and, and I have had the, the situation where, Mr. City Manager, I've reached out and say, well, do I need to, no, bro, I got you. And they have been like this after this storm. So I don't, I don't want to co-sign or create the facade that our Public Works individuals out there are not doing the job. Because if I felt like they wasn't doing that, I wouldn't be lobbying for them to be paid adequately like upper management is being paid. So I don't, I'm not labeling this and I know that this is an ideal situ, uh, rainfall like no before. But let's see if we can get those gas encounter taxpayers some immediate response like we got that lady there. I really would appreciate that. Thank you. I can give you Ms. Jackson's number and stuff if you need it.
Next speaker is Will Crowley.
Going once. Will Crowley? All right, our next speaker, please.
I have no other speakers, Mayor.
All right, we'll close the public hearing and we'll go to commission discussion. Mayor Pro Tim, we'll start with you.
Well, you know, Mr. Mayor, it's, it's very interesting that, uh, uh, Mr. Sims brought that issue up when he did. He, he's totally misinformed. I wish he had made it to the meeting the other night, Brother Sims. We met with the J. Gaither Neighborhood Association and neighbors of that neighborhood who live maybe a quarter block south of where I live. Uh, and I'm well aware of the issues that have been faced in that neighborhood, uh, over the years. There was an excellent presentation done by staff from UUPI of the $54 million worth of flood mitigation work that has been done in that area over the past several years.
24 million.
Was it 24 million? Okay.
56 houses with a flood.
That's right, that's right. 24 million and had not that work been done, 56 houses in that area would have flooded. Not one house during that unusual rainfall that we had a couple of weeks ago, not one house in that area flooded. All of the flooding would, from what was relayed during the presentation, was north of town. Is there more work to be done? Yes, there is. We heard the complaints from the Neighborhood Association President that Mr. Sims just mentioned, that the, uh, holding pond is full of debris. As a matter of fact, uh, on May, May 3rd, uh, we have set up, uh, uh, a walkthrough with the Neighborhood Association President and others that he might have come. But Commissioner Williams Cox and I, who both live on the South Side of Tallahassee, have agreed to meet with them along with staff from UUPI. We're gonna do a walkthrough of the neighborhood and see what their concerns are and make sure that those concerns are addressed. There's also a, I, I guess it's a mobile home park in the area. It's, it's not, they didn't have problems with flooding, but it, their roads are private roads and they're in terrible disrepair. Even emergency vehicles can't get in and out of that area. Uh, and so we're gonna take a look at that. Uh, Assistant City Manager Jumanville has already reached out to individuals in the neighborhood and Christine Henry, who said that she would work with them uh, to look at the process for deeding those roads over to the city so that they could eventually become, uh, maintained by the city. I used to live on a street, uh, in my own neighborhood that was on a private street, that was a private street and we had to go through that process to get that done as well. So we, we heard the issues impacting that neighborhood. We are following up and we will be walking through the neighborhood. If any of you that are concerned enough that want to join us, feel free to. Uh, it, it'll be open to the public. It's gonna have to be noticed because Commissioner Williams Cox and I will be there together. But that's the concern that we have for our neighbors and friends, uh, on the South Side of Tallahassee. And we have been so adamant about representing during our time on this commission. That's a, oh, Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to also announce that Commissioner Williams Cox and I, uh, Thursday evening will be receiving. Is it Friday? Friday, yeah. If I didn't have her standing here beside me, I'd be giving out all kind of misinformation. Friday, we are being presented with an award by the.
Fair Housing.
It, it's, uh, by the Fair Housing. For civil rights. It, there, this month is Fair Housing Month and they are, uh, recognizing the two of us for our work in the affordable housing arena. And so we're looking forward to that, uh, recognition. It's gonna be Thursday evening at Hotel Duval. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Wonderful. Uh, Commissioner Diane Williams Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take this opportunity to thank everybody who came to the meeting. Thank everybody who spoke, those who, uh, you're bringing your passion, your concerns. And I just want to ask you to please share the wealth. If your, if your issue is not a city issue or you're not a city resident, that means you live in the county. So please make sure you go across the street and share your concerns over there as well so that they can feel the love that we're feeling over here, um, meeting after meeting. And, um, I, as, as Commissioner Richardson mentioned, I, I did attend, uh, the meeting at J. Gaither. So did Commissioner Porter.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and we had three city managers. We had Neighborhood Affairs there. I mean, I'm not city manager, assistant city managers, um, and, and assistance, a deputy city manager Barber and I had met with them two weeks prior. And then Deputy, um, City Manager Barber went and met with them earlier in the week prior to us going over there. So, uh, J. Gaither is, um, we're, we are, we have not, we're not, have not forgotten. We, we are, we're paying attention to that neighborhood as we are with all, uh, of our neighborhoods. I think what we experienced was some abnormal rain in a short period of time that got dumped on us. Um, and it, and we weren't the only ones. So, um, I say, thank you to our city staff who was out there making sure that if there was any disconnections or anything that, that, um, needed emergency assistance, that that was taken care of. And that's the, that's the value of having a quality staff to be able to do those things and are always ready to, to move out to help us and, and to restore order here in our city. So I want to say thank you to our, um, our city manager, deputy city manager, assistant city managers, staff. Say thank you to our city attorney as well as to our Treasury Clerk's office. We, it, it takes a village and we are a village here. No matter what people say, the City of Tallahassee is focused on making sure that we adhere to our strategic plan and our priorities of public safety, affordable housing, quality of life and impact on poverty, infrastructure and so many other things. If you had the opportunity to talk to folks in other cities, you would find that they're wondering how we're getting so much done here in Tallahassee with the things that we're doing. We, I was in class with folks who were proposing that they go back and they do a penny sales tax. Well, guess what? The voters in Tallahas, in Tallahassee and Leon County voted to do that, um, more than 20 years ago and we're now seeing the fruit of that labor. Kudos to the Star Metro Communications, everybody who was there today to make sure we, uh, turn the dirt, um, at the, uh, South Side, um, transit facility. We're looking forward to, uh, renaming the, um, Althea Gibson Way from Wanish Way to Althea Gibson Way on next Tuesday. And we're looking forward to, um, cutting the ribbon on the senior center, uh, on May 1st. So no matter what you hear, you just pay attention. This city is moving forward and I'm glad to be a part of what we're doing. So thank you again, staff and, and everyone who's participated to make it happen.
Thank you. Commissioner Matt Lou.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, first off, it's Administrative Professionals Day. I wanted to recognize my aide Ryan Ray as well as Ms. Cami Jimenez upstairs here, who does all the hard work to, to make us look good. So, thank you. Um, my second question, I, I wanted to, as Commissioner Williams Cox just mentioned, on the renaming of Wanish Way. I did not know that at the county, they had a conversation about the part that extended on the other side of Orange Avenue, completely, um, eliminating the, the Wanish Way even outside of, um, FAMU's campus. Uh, Mr. Manager, my understanding that was based on, um, an updated rule or guidance at the county on renaming entire road segments. Is that accurate? Or?
Mr. Mayor, um, actually, my understanding of it, that the road, the Wanish Way in its entirety is partially a city road, mostly a city road. And then there's a portion on FAMU's campus. And so obviously what this body did was they said, recommend change the city road portion to the county. Not speaking for FAMU, but FAMU had already requested their segment of the road be renamed. It is the process that the county has employed work well for years that you renamed the entire segment. So that what, what you requested as a city commission was the city's portion of that road be renamed because that's the portion, uh, that you speak for. FAMU had already requested their section be renamed.
Do we know, thank you. Do we know why the, the Railroad Avenue, Macomb, Old Bainbridge portions of it aren't being proposed to be renamed? I, I'm just trying to get clarity on that several different names and, and how we determined. Is it just because it was previously named Wanish or?
Mr. Mayor, thi, this request was initiated by FAMU. Uh, and, and I think they were looking at in particular the section that's Wanish on the FAMU campus. But I don't think they were interested in the Macomb piece or any other segments. They wanted to rename that piece on their campus. Compared with that would be the Wanish, the continuation of Wanish Way onto the city roadway which continues on. So it, it was limited to the Wanish Way as named Wanish Way. Um, in theory, you could take that road through four other names, um, that had been done in the past.
Sure, thank, thank you. Uh, thank you, and, and I understand that and I supported and support renaming that portion of the roadway, particularly on, on FAMU's campus. But, uh, we, we have heard, um, substantial public feedback of making sure we continue to honor Mr. Wanish and his contributions, um, to, to the City of Tallahassee. Um, admittedly, I've been, I've been educated on a, a lot of what, what those were over the, the past few weeks. Um, I don't have a specific proposal today, but I wanted to make a motion, um, that we bring back an item discussing how we can honor Mr. Wanish moving forward after we rename the road.
Motion on table.
Second.
There's a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say in five, by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes your names.
Um, thank you. Um, the next issue, um, Mr. Manager, several weeks ago, there was, um, a news story and there effectively more than a million dollars had got, went missing or, or gone stolen. Have we had any of those funds recovered to date?
Mr. Manager.
Let me, I want to make sure I'm going, obviously, we have to be careful. It's an ongoing investigation, criminal investigation, so I want to be careful.
The attorney is taking her hand.
Okay. I, I think, I think, um, privately, we can share that information. That would be okay?
Yes, I just, I don't think, because it is an ongoing investigation, we should not have a public discussion about it.
It is an ongoing investigation, um, that involves local law enforcement, um, Secret Service, federal level law enforcement. It's complicated. Um, and there is information to share, but I don't believe we can share it publicly.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not asking you to do anything outside of the investigative process. Just wanted to keep tabs on that and make sure, um, we get regular updates. Um, the third item I had, we, I forwarded you a, a few emails that haven't got, that haven't received replies over the past few weeks. The first one, we started to receive in concern about a development at Market, in the Market District somewhere today. I have no idea what it is or what it's about. People were speculating 100 units around the park. Some people said we were selling part of the parkland. Some people said it was next to Sage. Um, do we have any information on where that's coming from?
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, we do. Um, I'm gonna ask Ms. Calder to come forward. It's a, a blueprint project that, that y'all are familiar with. It's the Market District Park.
Right.
It's been many years in the making. Um, it is nearing the point of groundbreaking. Um, and a developer approached, I believe, I believe he spoke to you, Autumn, but correct me if I'm wrong, and asked to buy a piece of the property that the Mark, the Market District Park will be on. So, Autumn, I'll, I'll let you tell them the conversation, but that was a request of a developer to buy land that's proposed or not proposed that's gonna be a park. So, Autumn, will you tell us kind of maybe the details of the discussion in, in your response?
Sure, yeah. Um, I met with, um, the developer, I think, a couple of weeks ago. He wanted to bring his, uh, proposal, uh, to me to see, um, where we were with the Market District Park. And I shared with him, um, really just the years of investment that the city has made getting that property ready for the park. And then, of course, the IA Board's, um, action and approval of a concept plan and also the IA Board's approval to go ahead and construct the park. And we are on the, the eve of being able to do that. I shared that with him, um, shared the substantial amount of public engagement that went into building that park or building the concept to get to the point where we can construct it. And yeah, yeah, we're, we're excited to be able to break ground on it this summer. Um, it's a, it's gonna be a great addition to the Market District. And a lot of the people that live in that area and work and have invested in that area are really excited about the park as well.
One point real quick, Commissioner Matt Lou. Uh, I think we're, I see where you're going and I agree with you. Uh, there is no formal staff recommendation from Blueprint to move forward with this idea?
Uh, no, sir.
There's no formal recommendation from staff at the City of Tallahassee to move forward with this idea?
No, sir. And let me be super clear. The answer was no. It wasn't a, let's consider it, we'll bring it out to the commission. We understand that's not a, that's a non-starter. And so that was clear, it was politely conveyed, but that wasn't a, you know, a request that anybody would entertain.
Uh, and, and, um, yeah, Commissioner Matt Lou, you have the floor. But I heard the same stuff and I think we were all concerned about it.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Autumn. We look forward to the Market District Park. We, we. We've been, it's going to be a great asset, so thank you, your work on it. That was out of the blue for me, I didn't know where it was coming from, so thank you for the update. Two more issues I mentioned at our last meeting. On the City of Tallahassee's website, there's a new firefighter trainee position, job qualifications. That seems to be the same as a firefighter minus EMT training. I just wanted to see if we can get some information on if those positions are being hired for, or how they would integrate with the department with the current staffing levels.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I'm not aware of any position of that nature on the website. You said it's on the website?
Yeah, on the website, there's a, we have the job description qualifications. There's one listed as firefighter trainee that's separate from firefighter. It's the exact same thing as firefighter, except it doesn't include the EMT training. It says it was added February 2024.
No firefighter trainee position has been approved. I will tell you that the chief is exploring the concept. That's not a position of the City of Tallahassee at this time. But the fire chief is aware that that's a trend around the state, and so, he's exploring the possibility of, does that make sense? That's not moved forward to the extent it does. We won't rely upon his recommendation and need for the department. But there's no City of Tallahassee-approved position for that. I'll have to inspect the website you're referring to.
Sure, yeah, and I'll forward it to you, and I just wanted to get ahead of it. I want to make sure, if it's a good way to recruit, I'm all for it, but I don't want to make sure we're not replacing people on engines at stations with people that don't have EMT training during the gap. Thank you for that update. The last, and I brought it up at the last meeting, can you share with me, and I emailed you this a couple of weeks ago, just every issue Drew Jones has contacted your office about that's city issue-related?
Yeah, I know you asked that question. I'm not really sure what that means or what that's about, or how I would answer the question, to be honest with you. We were not doing business with Van Core Jones. We haven't done business for many, many years with Van Core Jones. I think that's well-established, so I don't really know how to respond to your question.
So, you're saying he hasn't contacted you about any city issues in the past year?
Yeah, we're not doing business with him.
What's your concern, Commissioner Matlow?
I'm just aware of issues where Mr. Jones has been forwarding emails to the manager and Dr. Whitley, particularly for issues that were coming before the commission. And this, again, it goes back to the lobbyist loophole. Mr. Jones has repeatedly said he's not a lobbyist. I believe he's engaged in unregistered lobbying. I'm asking the Mr. Manager what the contact and what the nature of the conversations on the issues related to the emails that he sent regarding.
You have a particular, I think you'd be describing lobbying possibly. We're not doing business with Van Core Jones, that's what I understood your question to be.
No, the question is, city-related issues, business that becomes before the city, what issues has he been interested in contacting or influencing your position on? What I'm trying to determine.
We could certainly process that as a public records request.
Okay, we'll do that.
I mean, that's, yeah, otherwise, I don't know how to respond.
Okay, that's all for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank everyone who was involved in responding to the storm and everything that came thereafter. I was at the meeting with the J. Gaither Neighborhood Association, and just two weeks ago at this meeting, we were anticipating the storm and with really no idea of how intense it would be. So, as always, thank you to everyone who responded. On that note, though, Mr. City Manager, when we were invited to that meeting, I texted you, I called you, and I emailed you for more information about that meeting so that I could be prepared to respond to residents specifically with information about how that storm had impacted the J. Gaither neighborhood, and I never heard back from you. And while I was really happy to see that our staff attended that meeting, several staff members attended that meeting and were prepared with a presentation, and it seemed clear that my colleagues who were there were aware that the staff would be there, that is the kind of information that I would expect to have as well. I don't enjoy having these conversations, but I feel like the public has a right to know how some commissioners are treated and how some information is kept from us. The city manager and all appointed officials are accountable to us. My expectation is that all appointed officials are responsive to all elected commissioners. And I would hope that that's how my colleagues feel about me as well and all of us. So, that's all I had to say. I just feel like we've been going through this for a long time. I can't even tell you how many emails I don't get answered, and this is about how a functioning city operates. I need to be able to do my job. We all need to be able to work together, and I expect better moving forward. And the last thing that I'll say on a more positive note, thank you to everyone who had any role in making the chain of parks happen, Pride Fest happen. There was so much that happened this past weekend. Spring is here, I'm enjoying the weather, I just bought an electric bike, and I hope that all of us are enjoying springtime in Tallahassee as well. So, that's all for me, Mr. Mayor.
Great, my turn. First and foremost, let me take a second to recognize Tammy Jimenez that runs the show up on the fourth floor for us. She does an amazing job. We celebrate her every day, not just today for Administrative Assistance Day, but every day, and she does an incredible, incredible job. I want to thank the team for everything that y'all have done during this storm event that we just experienced. It was quite the event. Makes us all sit back and wonder, you know, why are these storms becoming more intense, more frequent? How does this impact our standards, not just City of Tallahassee, but design standards as a society and as we move forward? And I know that we have a very busy projected hurricane season that's coming upon us. I just want to, once again, thank all the men and women of the City of Tallahassee and all the great work that you do. Having said that, I don't want to wait till the next meeting, but Mr. Cook, I want you to provide myself and my colleagues a complete and thorough update on the, I think there's been three or four claims, or maybe a half dozen claims regarding sewage backup in houses.
Yes, sir.
And I would like to know specifically what the City of Tallahassee intends to do with engaging with these residents. It's a very few amount, very specific cases, but I know this is something that the city has engaged in in the past, and I think that keeping with precedent, we should be brought up to speed on exactly what's happening and how we move forward.
I'll get that information to you.
I want to thank the team that went out the other day, I could not join you, in the J. Gaither neighborhood, talking about the stormwater issue and how much we appreciate it. And, Mr. Manager, I appreciate you working with residents as they come forward to with flooding issues and having the team go out and evaluate. Commissioner Porter, let me be very clear and direct, I hear you loud and clear, and we all do need the same information. It goes both ways. I know for a fact you stood up, this team that was supposed to brief you yesterday, that was in the office when you sent your cancellation in the last 15 minutes. So, when they are prepared and ready to go, let's take our briefings and not come to meetings and just rip everybody to shreds. It's a level of professionalism that I think we all expect. I'm getting more and more frequently frustrated with the politicization of un-adjourned speakers. And once again, I'm going to appeal to my colleagues that we do some thinking on how we address these issues, whether it's people yelling at Curtis or yelling at Jack. This does not serve the body politic. This is not who we are, nor is it really addressing city issues. This is just the weaponization of the process, and I'm done with it. And so, I'm going to be bringing some ideas back again, once again, to this body, and how we can maintain decorum and get rid of the political circus that we are now witnessing on a daily basis. I'm getting tired of hearing members of this board criticize police action after it goes before a jury of our peers. Commissioner Matlow, I think it's unacceptable. Look, we don't have any control over the judiciary whatsoever. That is a completely separate body of government. If you have...
One point, Mr. Mayor. You're attacking individuals on this dais.
It's my time, it's my time, it's my time. You are out of order. It is my time, it is my time.
You're out of order, Mr. Mayor. That's a personal attack.
I am addressing what you have been putting out on social media, attacking, day in and day out, the three of us, this institution, manager, attacking the police department. And I am just tired, and I am trying to appeal to your better side. Please ask that we move forward and show me the respect, and allow me to finish, please. I gave everyone else the opportunity to speak. And this is a prime example of what we are dealing with, day in and day out, and I think at the end of the day, the residents of the City of Tallahassee see this for what it is. Everyone have a good night, be safe. We stand adjourned.